Good afternoon, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call our joint meeting together Suffolk City Council and Suffolk School Board. Welcome, everyone. I think we're set up for a very productive meeting. We've got six very pertinent topics to speak to. At this time, I'm gonna take a moment just introduce members of council that are here, and then Chairman Jenkins will do the same for the school board, and then we'll go through some operational statements as far as time constraints and that sort of thing. So, starting over there on my left, we've got Vice Mayor Lou Ward, Councilmember Butler Barlow, Councilmember Fawcett, Councilmember Bennett, and...
That's it?
That's it? Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Riddick Richter will not be in attendance, and both of them have been excused. Chairman Jenkins.
Thank you. Thank you for the invite and for this, hopefully, productive meeting that we're gonna have. I'd like to introduce our board members, Dr. Brooks Buck with the Nansman Borough. We have Mrs. Slingloff, Kim Slingloff, she's with Chukka Tuff Borough. We have Dr. Brittenham, she's with the Holy Neck Borough. And we have Vice Chair Heather Howell, she is with our Sleepy Hole Borough. And I think that's it. And we have Ms. Baum, who, because of some other complications, she was not here today, but she is here in spirit. And I think Board Member Riddick maybe will be here.
Okay. Before we get started, I just want to remind everybody that you don't have to worry about pushing the button. The mics are hot all the time, so if you've got some thoughts you want to keep to yourself, that's... Keep in mind that these are our live, and if you bump into them, whoever's gonna have to create a little bit of interference. As far as time management is concerned, I've spoken to the school board chair, and she's agreed that what we will do is, the presenter will present the discussion item, and then after that's completed, we'll go around the room and see if anybody has any questions or comments to that particular topic. They won't be answered right then, because I think it's best if we go way around and the presenter just kinda back in her head, keep in mind, you know, what topics need to be addressed, and you'll be allocated about three minutes for questions and comments, and that should ration our time well. So, with that being said, let's move to our first discussion item, which is proposed Suffolk Public School Board Fiscal Year 2635 Capital Improvement Plan.
Thank you, Mayor Dooman. At our recent school board meeting, this school board actually approved and adopted the plan that is part of your notebooks that we also see here on the screen. I'll just take the time just to review the order and to provide a small narrative attached with each one. As we see, we still have major systems and repairs and placements will still be number one on the list, however, as you see, these funds, 3.575 million dollars that was actually allocated for this year, as well as 2526, and 2627 is actually being used for the Northern Shores Elementary School addition. We are currently underway with the John Neff Kennedy Middle School Project, set to open in 2627. That school is about 36 to 37 percent complete right now. If you drive by there, you can see many of the walls that are up. We are in a design phase for Northern Shores Elementary School, taking a look at additional parking lot space, as well as some changes that potentially may have to be made to the kitchen. That is in design phase, but hopefully, design will be done early 2025. College and Career Academy at Prudential C cap for 3.5 million dollars, that's a renovation for modernization of the CTE programs. Then the board shifted to ensuring that we had a plan in place to remove mobile units from several of our schools. That's been a goal of the school board, basically, since I've been here, is also as a result of our facility study. First school to hopefully accomplish that would be Elephants Fork Elementary School, with work starting in the fiscal year 2627. Then Kilby Shores Elementary School, with work starting in 2728 with design work. Then moving to Forest Glen Middle School, there was a lot of positive discussion about potentially having Kilby Shores Elementary School and Forest Glen Middle School on the same site. Then moving towards Nansman Parkway Elementary School, as you see, that's a little bit further out, with design work beginning in 203031. Then the Nansman River High School addition, looking at a potential addition of 20 classrooms, with design work beginning in 213132. We're looking at the area for the potential expansion in addition to be right beside the gymnasium, out the back towards the practice field. Then John Yates Middle School, beginning also in 3132, with design and construction beginning hopefully in the same year. The board also had additional discussion about the school administrative office building, which is the last piece that we have on the CIP. The board still wants to have additional discussion topics on potentially using existing space or school board property or other property within the city before they confirm a look at using Phase Two. The Operations Center Phase Two, the board did agree that because we have Wright Lane that's now in place with a long-term lease there, we were looking to potentially use those funds to be transferred to build a new school administrative office that the city currently pays the lease. So, that is the CIP that the school board had voted on at our last meeting, and I will turn it back over to Ms. Jenkins to open up any questions or discussion.
Thank you. You explained it very well. Does anyone have any questions about what was read at this time?
I'd like to... Superintendent and myself have talked several times about the admin building. I just want to make sure I understood. Are you still considering something other than Mount Zion at this moment, or is Mount Zion the other location?
I think all options are actually on the table, based on the board discussion. I think the biggest question the board has was hopefully be able to use the funds that were originally set aside for Phase Two. There's been discussion about potentially taking a look at Driver Elementary. We will have an update to the board from the executive summary of the facility study, because there was questions about renovating schools versus rebuilding schools, repurposing older buildings, as well as taking a look at what other options there were in the city before the board commits to saying that Phase Two of the Operations Center, the old Mount Zion building, was gonna be the only choice.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, the discussion, just to give you some history, the discussion came about as a result of, I believe it was Board Member Riddick, and I'm sorry, he's not here to talk about himself, but he brought up the idea, and the board voted to look at having rules about repurposing buildings. That's how that discussion started. We also talked about the fact that out in the Mount Zion area, we have a staff out, of course, in the administrative building that goes out from place to place, and there are no restaurants, there are no eating places out there. They have a 30-minute lunch period, which would be kinda hard to master since there's nothing out there but a truck stop for the whole staff to eat or to get to places, and we only have one school in that area, so those people are going back and forth from school, so we're looking at mileage, we're looking at a lot of things, but that's how the discussion was generated, when we decided to put in place, as a matter of fact, work on a policy that said we had to look at every existing building that we already have and decide whether we can use it for something, whether we can't use it for something. And so, we started that discussion, just to give you some issue of how the conversation changed.
I appreciate it. A little bit changed from my last conversation. Appreciate that.
Any notes?
I guess, as we move forward with our staff, talking about our policies and our financial abilities, as we look out through the adopted CIP, we're starting to get to 33, 54, 53, 52, 99 million, 95 million, and 80 million, which I think we all realize, on an annual basis, there will be have to be some discussions on the affordability of each of those items, because as you'll hear in a few moments, I didn't want to take Charles' presentation, myself almost here, but, you know, we bond at about 35 million a year, and that's up 5 million from what we did a few years ago, so there is some separation between 99 million and 35 million, obviously, so with that...
If we move on to council members, have you got any questions or comments?
Well, I have one comment, and I don't know if it'd be appropriate to bring it up at this time. You know, Nansman River High School, we're talking about whether we're gonna add on there or not, you know, with the school, or what we was gonna do there, whether to renovate or add on. The neighborhood back of Mansfield Farm, they have quite a few acres right butts up to the school, which they don't use, and they are looking at whether or not the school might be interested in taking that over. All they're doing is maintaining it, cutting grass, and they were just wondering whether or not the school would be interested in working with them to turn that land over to the city, I mean, to the school for further development or whatnot. Just to think, something I wanted to bring up to you, to think about, and we can talk about that later, but I just want to put that into process here after we're talking about it.
Councilmember Bennett, if I may, put one point about, as far as the development of Mansfield Farm, that was set aside as their open space, as part of that overall development, just so we have a full context of what that open space is.
Okay, so it can't be used then for anything else?
I think we would have to go back and change the approach, I guess, is the best statement right at this moment.
Okay. And that had been asked me, so I just wanted to bring it up here, so you have a better understanding.
Okay. I've got a couple of comments before we move to our next topic, if there's no other discussion. The school administration building, I mean, we've got serious time constraints on that again, this is about my, this would be about my fourth shot at going around with the school administration building, and that's on a five-year lease. I think we're just finished year two, is that right? How does that sound like?
Uh, year one or two.
Yeah. So, bottom line is, if we're gonna do something with the school administrative offices, if there's something that we can look into, it needs to be decided in the next 12 months, so we could hopefully have an alternate location for that. If not, we'll probably be renewing a lease for another five years, which is definitely not my preference, but that's gonna be the reality of it. So, if the manager can get with a superintendent, or we can talk about some type of an amendment in the budget, that needs to be moved up, if it's at all possible. I feel the same way about Nansman River High School. I mean, in 2021, we've got the facility study. If you go back and look at it, when the facility study came back and it recommended that additional in Nansman River High School, I pretty much said, "I wish I had the capability, I'd write a check for it," because that seemed to be the most bang for the buck right off the top. I mean, the high schools are a little different than the middle schools and the elementary schools, in that we only have three, and that the majority of growth in Suffolk is on the east side of Nansman River. And I think what we're gonna see with probably what is going to be presented in our pipeline developments, and what's already in the works, is that student generation is not probably gonna slow down on that side of town. So, if there's any way we can move that up, I think with that addition, and I hate to use the redistricting word, but if you did that addition and redistricted a couple of hundred kids off the west side of Kingsfort to Lakeland, I think you could save your, you could take care of your high school capacity for the next decade, and with, which would align more with what growth we're expecting. As far as Elephants Fork is concerned, I mean, there's no question that Elephants Fork needs to be, in my opinion, needs to be a priority, but I also think we need to seriously look at another location. I just don't think that location, especially in the long run, having to go by there, I go by there every morning, I go home every night, I go out frequently, if I have to test drive a car or something, to go past there, and it is difficult, to say the least, to get in and out of there. I mean, I see cars backed up all the way from Elephants Fork, from the elementary school back onto Route 10, and the way the land is situated, it's literally, that site is landlocked. There's not any other road arteries unless you go through Nansman Gardens or find a way to hook up with 58, which you can't. So, I think we need to give serious, not only thought, I just think we need to find a way to make it happen. And it's easy for me to say, because I don't know what the money looks like, but I think we need to thoroughly investigate where our options may be, as far as that professional building is concerned, and as far as Elephants Fork is concerned, before we get too far into we can't get out. We need to get ahead of it, and that's all I get for that. Other than that, you know, I think the CIP is kind of in line with where it was last year, and it's just a matter of us doing the best we can with what we've got, but we definitely need to take a look and see what options we have and what kind of funding it would take to make something happen sooner than later. So, is there any other questions in regards to item one?
Madam Chair, if I can just comment to one option I considered, and this was the board vote and the will of the board, but when I was looking at the CIP, I tried to kill two birds at a time, because our list is very long of what needs to be done, and I was considering what's a reasonable request for funding, and I looked at simultaneously addressing the school administrative offices while starting the planning phase for Elephants Fork, because Elephants Fork doesn't need to be pushed down the road any further, but we also don't want to renew a lease. And I thought, you know, those are two things that can be done simultaneously. Of course, again, everybody put their input in, and that's not where we landed. I'm fine with that, but if the discussion reopens, we are all aware that Elephants Fork is a priority. We're all aware it shouldn't go there anymore. We're also all aware that this is not within our own operating budget to begin this process. So, essentially, we're not the holdup. And as far as SAO goes, I know Mr. Moore and Dr. Gordon have had countless conversations and thrown out numerous options, trying their very best to get that resolved, and I know that that's been a priority, so I guess I just want to acknowledge their efforts there, because I know they've had multiple meetings, and Mr. Moore has, you know, thrown out as many options as he can come up with, for us to work these two priorities out, to be fiscally responsible while also taking care of the safety of our kids, so we don't get locked into another lease. So, I just wanted to give some background of the input that I've given in this discussion. I think that it's a reasonable request, that we look at moving SAO while starting the design process for Elephants Fork. It's not anywhere near the $99 million range that we all know is not gonna happen anyway, because it's more than four years out on this plan.
Madam Chair, I would ask that the school board and council do a joint inquiry to see if Virginia Department of Transportation would maybe willing to lease to own the property that they have for sale, if the property is still available for purchase, because with the money that we're paying in the current school administrative office, we don't purchase the building, revitalize the building, at least two times over. But this is a centralized location. I believe it would satisfy the needs of the school division on multiple fronts, as well as some of the wants and needs of the city on multiple fronts, such as access to deep water for those citizens who came out and spoke about being able to have access to do fishing. It's prime real estate, so when the funding comes available for us to build a brand-new one, if that's the will of the city council and board at that time, we can do what, the city can do whatever they desire to do with the land, but for, to ask staff to remain in a facility that have lived its usefulness without owning it, is not a wise decision. So, I would ask that council and the school board jointly looking to some type of conversation with V dot to see how we could acquire the usage of that building, because right now, I believe it's still for sale, still on the market, and it's been there for some time.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, I would just like to go ahead and say also about the school administrative bill. I have been one that felt like we should have moved a long time ago what we were paying rent there, and invested in something that would be permanent home for the school, so I strongly support doing something about, rather than continuing to renew the leases there, is to go ahead and have the money put into some permanent type of building for them to be in. So, I strongly support to move with that, to move forward to another location where it will be a permanent home.
I just want to say, I'm sorry, that, thank you for that recommendation. We've been talking about that, and I think that would be a good choice for what we, whatever if we decide anything about Driver, but our administrative personnel need a safe place to be, because I know right now it's raining, and there's trash cans or buckets all around, because it's leaking. So, this is what they are subject to, and it's not fair. So, I think everybody's in agreement that something needs to be done, and we don't need to waste any more time. We just need to get together and make it work.
You know, I'd also like to add, I like that idea. Mr. Riddick, we can take, I never thought about it, because I always, you know, you get hit with the money, I think they wanted 12 or 13 million dollars, and seems like a lot of money, but then I look at the CIP over the years, and it's really not that much money. So, I think it is possibly something we could look at, and it would be advantageous for the city also. Of course, you wouldn't use it all, it's a good chunk of property, but if we acquired it, then it may be possible. I don't know, it's worth looking into for sure. And I thank you for bringing that up.
Madam Chair, all of these ideas sound really good, and I think since this is a public meeting, we need to also make plain that one of the reasons that we ordered these things in the way that we ordered them is because we always wanted to make schools a priority and children a priority. We had huge conversations about safety and portables, trailers. We're never meant to be permanent classrooms, and so when we ordered, when we made, when we put things in order, and of course, students in my borough, the Nansman River High School, so that's been a priority for all of us as well, we need to make clear that when we, at least when I did, when we discussed it, we discussed with other board members, where children were became our priority, and so when we looked at ordering these things, we looked at schools where children were. And I think we're all in agreement, as you said, Mayor Dooman, that Elephants Fork has to have new plays, and with, I think, 13 trailers now, 13, Northern Shores had 12, Elephants Fork had 13, there are several that have trailers behind them. That's why these became, the little ones, especially being outside, became a priority for us, and that's why we did the order that we did. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I have another question, maybe another option. Looking for an alternate location for Elephants Fork, if we found that alternate location for Elephants Fork, would Elephants Fork location work for your SAO?
Madam Chair, Mr. Make address that. It's a possibility. I mean, right now, the priority for us is just to get out of the current building, so we would be open to that. However, the board and staff has had some discussions about Elephants Fork also becoming an early childhood central location, and if it became an early childhood central location, that would also assist us with the enrollment, because we could pull the early childhood classrooms out of several of the surrounding elementary schools, where sometimes we may have two, three, or four early childhood classes. So, that would be something we would take a look at. Whatever building that we do go into, if it's an existing building, I also just want to remind everyone that there still will have to be some renovation to take place in order to fit it to the needs of the SAO, and as manager's gonna be infrastructure when it comes to technology, which adds on a couple of million more dollars. So, Mr. Riddick and I have talked about the V dot bill before he brought it up at the last meeting. I agree with Mayor Dooman as well that the time constraints, that's why the city manager and I have looked at four sites. We looked at four sites, and we were concerned, there was some concern about parking, and there was concern about HVAC, and then the cost, and that's why the operations kind of became a topic, but then the board had concerns about, not concerns, discussion about repurposing other buildings, which we are open to. And the only thing I'm asking for both city council and the board just to understand is, we do not want to renew that lease. We just, what Ms. Jenkins said is clear. If you are in my office right now, you can hear the water going down the wall, right now. And that's just something that we've always had to deal with. The city, Mr. Moore and I have worked out a great plan to take over the front, to try to alleviate some of the space that we have in the SAO, because we had four, sometimes five, people in offices. And then we got the price tag back to renovate the front of the building, and that was easily seven figures plus. And that wasn't something that we thought would be fiscally responsible to do that, even though it would have helped us out for a couple of years. Probably, actually, it would have been about 18 months, because it was gonna take a year to a year and a half to even do that part of the renovation for a building that, we don't know. So, we didn't think that was gonna be a good decision. So, Mr. Hughes and I and Gary, everybody, we've had these conversations. We are hoping to have a plan in place so that we actually move out the summer before the lease expires, and I believe that lease expires, I want to say, is 2028.
2028, December 34th.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, we'll move on to our second topic of the afternoon, city Suffolk financial policies and debt limits. Mr. Manager?
Yes. Charles Meeks, our director of finances, want to go over item two and item three here together. First, the policies and our debt limits, which is the other half of the equation that we always gotta look at when we're talking about building new facilities. And also, he'll review our current CIP, how we have things layered, plus the schedule as we move forward with developing this company's CIP. Charles?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, chair, vice chair, members of the school board. We're in that time of year again, where we're developing the CIP. The request packages from city departments and the school board are in, so the staff is in the process right now of evaluating those. We'll be meeting with the departments, and Dr. Gordon and his staff over the next couple weeks and month, to review those requests, and then working with the city manager to develop the proposed fiscal year 2026, 2035 CIP. As we begin that work each year, the first thing we do each year is look at our key financial And this is to ensure that we continue to operate within our AAA-rated financial framework in making our capital planning decisions over the next five years plus. And so, some of those key policies include capital pay-go, which is our cash-funded capital projects. We have a policy of 3% of our general fund spending. This past year, in the fiscal year 25 budget, you can see we're at 10.1%, so well exceeding that threshold. Debt as a percentage of assessed value, there's a state constitutional requirement that it be no more than 10%. Our city charter limits it further to 7%, and our financial policy at 4%, and we're at 1.5%. Debt as a percentage of general government expenditures, ceiling of 10%, and we're at And then our unassigned fund balance, fund balance policies. We want to maintain at least 20% of our general government expenditures in unassigned fund balance. We've met that policy. We've added in an additional layer with the Budget Stabilization Fund, with a max of 2.5% of general government expenditures. And then our Capital Reserve Fund, which is where we can pull money out of the Capital Reserve and the fund balance to put additional cash towards capital projects to kind of fill in the gaps. When we developed the budget back in April, we were projecting about 50.9 million moving forward with the Capital Reserve Fund. Expect that to increase a little bit more as we wind down the financial statements and results of fiscal year '24. bit more as we wind down the financial statements and results of fiscal year 24. And I'll remind everyone that in the CIP, the adopted CIP that we're currently working under, we're planning on using about 22 to 23 million of that over the next five years to fill in gaps with various capital projects throughout the city. Looking at the next slide, you know, we've talked, you know, the last several years about bond capacity. You've heard that term. You've heard $30 million thrown out there, which was our cap for a number of years. We increased that, as Mr. Moore indicated, last year to $35 million. And this slide here just shows you, taking that $35 million a year over the next five years is about $175 million in debt financing for capital projects. And it shows you that we're well within our policy framework, doing really well there, forecasting out ahead. So that is good news. We recently met with bond rating agencies this past summer. We were affirmed with our AAA rating by Fitch, Moody's, and Standard and Poor's. During those meetings, you know, they took a look at the city's credit profile, our economic development, our demographics, the educational profile of city residents, as well as our financials. And some of the comments that we received back, they, they really like the fact that the city has consistent operating surpluses each year and that our reserve fund balances are growing and increasing. They noted our positive demographics and economic growth trends with the population increase, all the economic development activity around the city, you know, bodes well for, for us. They liked the fact that the city and the schools have well-funded retirement liabilities, both pension and other post-employment benefits. And they liked the fact that we layer in our financial policies and use those in making decisions about capital planning, not just for the upcoming year, but four or five years down the road. To them, that signals we have forward-looking management practices in capital planning. They also noted that the city, when we compare ourselves, or they compare ourselves to other AAA communities, our leverage position, our debt is slightly above average compared to those AAA communities. Doesn't mean that we're, you know, running afoul of policies or any danger. It's just when they compare us to other AAA communities in Virginia and across the country, we have a little bit higher debt profile. Another thing they looked at was the debt to income and debt to wealth metrics. Again, a little bit higher than some of our AAA counterparts. They noted that what could negatively influence the city's rating is if we had a sustained material increase in the amount of long-term debt or pension liabilities, assuming current levels of economic activity and personal income and governmental revenues and expenditures. One of the direct questions that they asked us was whether we planned to continue issuing about $35 million a year going forward. They seemed like they felt very comfortable with that. And so we take all of that to note as we enter the CIP development process this fall. Looking at the current year or current adopted CIP, the school section, we have the major repairs and systems replacements in years four and five. JFK Middle School, which was funded last year, $25 million of that. The Northern Shores Elementary addition is the next project that's moving forward. And then the College and Career Academy at Pruden and then Elephant's Fork were all showing in the first five years. These projects will shift forward, those in the out years would shift forward. We've received the school board's request. And so as, over the next few months, we'll be taking a look collectively at all the projects that have been put forward, taking a look at our bond issuance and cash funding and trying to make the best decisions possible for the city and the schools moving forward. The timeline, again, we are, are in the throes of the evaluation process right now. We'll be meeting with departments and the school staff in October. The city manager will be seeking input from city council members. And then we will develop a proposed CIP and move that forward to the CIP Subcommittee in mid-November and then take that to the Full Planning Commission at their December meeting and a January meeting for adoption. It will then move forward to city council at the first meeting in February for a first look at it. And then a public hearing and opportunity for adoption at the second meeting in February prior to our operating budget process. So we have a lot of work ahead of us, a lot of factors in play, a lot of good projects out there, and look forward to working with everyone to put together the best plan possible. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Council, School Board, any questions or comments? Okay, we're moving right along. Item number three, which would be a review of the 2025, 2034. That's what we just finished. That's right. You put them together. Okay, let's go to residential development.
Yes, Mayor, Chairman, who will have members of the School Board and Council. We'll have Kevin Wine to present a short presentation on our development, our residential development throughout the city. What's really active, what's happening today?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, or good afternoon, rather, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council and School Board. Not a lot has changed since our last discussion back in April as far as development trends. Where, where we've seen a shift over the last five, seven years from a lot of development in the greenfields that previously existed in the north end of our city, they've kind of gravitated to the central area of the city in a lot of ways, really along that, the cusp of the Route 58 bypass. That's, that's where we've seen a lot of shift. But it's, it's important to note, we do maintain pipeline information. We, we use it as a, as a tool to identify what developments from a residential perspective may generate from a student generation perspective. We identify that in our Unified Development Ordinance, exactly what those numbers are. However, I think what can get lost sometime in looking at that information is the, the build-out of these developments, how long it takes often from rezoning to final certificate of occupancy on a structure. And a good example of that is, is Hill Point. Hill Point was originally approved in 1986. They continue to build in Hill Point today, nearly 40 years later, as it relates to that original unit total that was approved. Harborview is another example, a large master plan community. Took quite a while to get from first construction to ultimate build-out over several decades. So I'm, I'm going to share with you a few maps. Large city, it's hard to capture our growth areas on a map that's easier read, but I'll, I'll try to walk you through where some of these are located. But this is our northern growth area in the city of Suffolk. Really, that area around Nansman River High School north, all the way to the river and Harborview. And then the area around Governor's Point and the Cedar Point Golf Course is also included in our northern growth area. The developments that, oh, the green dots on the screen, they illustrate what is ongoing from a construction standpoint or what has already been built out from a construction standpoint. The red dots represent those that have received rezoning approval from the city. However, at this point, we have not received a plan to move that project forward. So those are a little further away. Some key projects in our northern growth area to, to keep an eye on, the biggest being the River Club development. This is off of Bob White. A River Club is served by, ugh, Nansman River High School. I believe it is John Yates Middle School. And it's either Creekside or Florence Bowser Elementary School. I'll get to a slide in a, in a moment that will actually show that. But we have some heat maps in our presentation that we'll, we'll show you as well. And that, that's really where the, the growth is coming immediately in the northern part of the city. Other, I, other developments of note include a by-right development that did not require a rezoning called Spencer's Watch. This is that field right across from John Yates Middle School. That would be 116 single-family units. There is a mixed-use development kind of in the theme of what we've seen at Bridgeport along 17, called the Burbage Grant Apartments. Those don't traditionally generate students at the same levels of single-family detached products, but that is a 227-unit apartment mixed-use development that would be served by Northern Shores, Fred Cherry, and Nansman River High School. And then we have the Reserve at Cedar Point, which is under construction. That is near Eclipse and the Cedar Point Golf Course. That is 70 single-family residential units and that is served by Oakland Elementary and Kings Fork Middle and High Schools. So here we have the same map and you can see the same map of our central area of the city. And you can see a few clusters of where development has occurred, primarily north of the Route 58 bypass along Godwin, North Main, and then a little collection along Pitch Kettle and then Turlington Road. A lot of this development is underway in some fashion. And it's really, at this point, feeding mostly to Kings Fork Middle and Kings Fork High with it being spread around from an elementary school perspective. Some developments that have been approved from a rezoning perspective since you all's last joint meeting back in April include the Parkwood development. This is a mixed product development that would be served by Kilby Shores Elementary currently, Kings Fork Middle, and Lakeland High. And that would be 235 units consisting of apartments as well as some townhome product. And then Pitch Kettle Landing is a townhome development that was recently approved. That's 335 townhome units that would be served by Elephant's Fork, Kings Fork Middle, Kings Fork High. Important to note that both of those developments, as a part of their proffer, as approved by city council, included significant contributions to CIP projects for the school system. The Parkwood one alone was $1.5 million. The Pitch Kettle Landing one was $5.9 million. That would go towards those CIP projects as they are adopted. Another important caveat too was a phasing schedule for the Pitch Kettle Landing development, which pushes out a full build-out to at least 2031. So those are some of the considerations that we take into account as we analyze these applications. So here are those heat maps that I discussed previously. This is your, an overlay on the right hand of the screen as you're looking at it is the central growth area. On the left hand of the screen is your northern growth area. The red and yellow, those are where really the students are being generated, at least per our UDO calculation method. The orange there on the left-hand side of your screen, that's the River Club development, 377 single-family units. That was originally, began in 2003 and they just began construction here within the last two years. So that is going to be several phases built out. That, that will certainly take them another five to seven years. On the right-hand side of your screen, that same orange-yellow color is really concentrated near Kings Fork High School and Middle School. And that is the Godwin Place, or Godwin Park development, excuse me. That's a, a mixed-use development that has some phasing associated with it too. But that's primarily where those students are coming from, as well as the Gallery at Godwin, which at this point is largely developed. And those are a mixed-use product as well. Once again, those do not generate school students from, from what we've seen in the same way that traditional single-family does. Here's the same overlay for your middle school districts. John Yates is, will serve the River Club development, as you can see. And then Kings Fork Middle will serve the concentration of development that we have in our central growth area. And then same for the high schools. River Club served by Nansman River High School. And then Kings Fork High School will receive the majority of students that we have, have coming online, potentially in the central growth area. So some trends that, that we've seen, and we've shared this before, year over year, regardless of what we have in the pipeline, very consistent, about 500 to 600 new residential units come online. Those are the amount of certificate of occupancies we, as the city, issue year over year, whether that be in new development like this or infill development throughout the city. And that's been a very stable trend for the last decade or so. During that time, and for a variety of factors, whether it's couples having children later in life or shrinking household size, we've seen a trend of new development is just not creating students like it once did. But it's still important from a consideration standpoint when we look at these rezoning applications that we analyze and ultimately present to city council for consideration. But over that last decade, with that amount of COs that we have seen, we've only seen an increase of slightly under 200 students system-wide. And that's with that amount of COs being issued annually. So with that being said, that completes my presentation on our residential development trends. I'll be happy to stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Would you, School Board first?
Dr. Plaugh?
One of, it's live, right. One of the questions that I've
It's really closer to you. Can you feel it?
Right, I'm sorry. One of the questions that I've asked over the years as we've had these meetings about student production. When I got on the board, when I came on the board, we had a little over 12,000 students. We graduate close to 1,000 students each year, each year. And that's 12 years. So let's say close to, it might be a little under 1,000, sometimes a little over 1,000. So in the 12 years I've been on the board, that would be, what, 12 times 12. And we have 14,500 students now. So while the single-family homes might generate 200 students a year, we somehow managed to replace those 1,000 students who graduate every year and add some. So they're coming from somewhere. And I know that there's a formula for housing and I know that people are under the, a misunderstanding because they think that, you know, you only get a few hundred kids or, or maybe less than that each year. And they forget that we lose 1,000 each year. And so those are there, along with the 500 or whatever, 200 or whatever that are replaced. So for us to get from the 12,000 some when I got on the board to the 14,000 some and miss the 12 times, the 12,000 that we've lost over the 12 years that I've been on the board, we had to get them from somewhere. And so I really think that we need to look at our calculations when we look at schools. And so I really think that we need to look at our calculations when we look at schools. And it really gives people a mis, confused indication, let me say, or a misrepresentation of how this thing works. Because when I hear it, it sounds like students are being lost somewhere, and they aren't. Families are having to live in apartments now. Families are having to share apartments now. Families are living in other areas, and there's no way in the world, if we lose 1,000 every year, that we could only be getting 100 or so or 200 or so every year and get up to 14,512,000 something when I got on the board. It's just math doesn't work that way. So I think we need to look at our calculations when we look at some of these, some of these developments that are being approved and built. I know that some of the conversations that we've had from the Northern End, of course, are, and now from Kings Fork. When we had the study years ago, we talked about the fact that Nansman River was growing, and Kings Fork and Nansman River are a few students apart right now. The problem is, of course, and then Kings Fork Middle, the problem, and when we built Fred Cherry, we realized that when we built Fred Cherry years ago, we found that we had, John Yates for 800 kids had 1,204 students. It was 150% overcrowded. We had a whole trail of town behind it with 18 trailers and 200 sixth graders in those trailers. And I know, because I had a sixth grader in one of those trailers. I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking that, one, we need to look at the way we're calculating things, and, two, we need to look at what we're presenting to the public. Because they are under the impression that when we build these apartments, that we aren't getting children from these apartments, and we indeed are. And the more that we build, the more that we have, the more children we have. And if we just talk about the formula, and I know that there's a formula that we use, and we just look at three bedrooms, four bedrooms, or whatever, we're getting the thousands of students who've joined us over the years from somewhere. And they're coming from homes where families, in some instances, have to double up, for whatever reason. But they are there, and they live there, and they have to be served. So I think it's important that we make it clear to the public that we aren't losing all these students. This is not a diminishing thing. People are graduating, and their slots are being filled, and then there are additions. And so we need to look at our formula when we look at planning for students, because we have 14,500 and-
Thirty-two.
And 32 at this point. And also, when I looked at our projections, I know that we met before, and we had a lot of discussion about, may have been last year, about the size of John F. Kennedy and our projection or our desire to have 800 John F. Kennedy. We've talked about what we're going to build in the John Yates area. We have a thousand-capacity school, which means that we're projecting or we're suggesting that we're going to build much more than what we thought we were going to build in that region. If we're talking about, and nobody's complaining at all about, a thousand-capacity school for middle school, I'm surely not complaining about that. But my question is, if we're looking at projections, then we need to look at the schools around them. Because right now, in your neighborhood and my neighborhood, we're in the Nansman Borough, but in his neighborhood, we've had to bus the children to Creekside, out of the Nansman Borough, into the Sleepy Hole Borough to go to school, because we have no place for them. We're overcrowded at Northern Shores, which is what is in my borough. That's why we're building the extension. If we're talking about building a thousand-capacity school, we're expecting some more students from somewhere. What are we doing on the elementary level? Because then we're going to have to look down the line at the schools that we're replacing because those schools are full to capacity. So if you're, if we're looking at the proffers that you mentioned, and that sounds great because at one point in time, we thought we couldn't do proffers, or proffers weren't allowed, or somehow they had to be used differently, we don't know when that's going to happen. How does that work? Maybe I'm, I'm asking the wrong question or making the wrong point. How does that work? When do we get to use that money? And when is that money geared toward the school or the community where it can be used?
That money is collected at the time of building permit issuance or certificate of occupancy. So the unit comes online, they provide us a payment for that unit.
So if they don't, when it comes online, so when somebody actually moves into it, okay? So when it's done, then that's when we can look for some money toward building the school? That's correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for listening to my rumblings, but I didn't want to say those things.
Madam Chair.
It might actually address one of yours.
I don't think so.
All right. So I have a couple of questions, because you gave us some good numbers. Cedar Point, that will take care of Oakland, will feed into Oakland, Kings Fork Middle, Kings Fork High School. How many total units is that?
Seventy.
Seventy. And Godwin Park Development?
Godwin Park Development is north of 700 total units of mixed-product type to include. I believe there are some age restricted in that as well. But that is reliant on a highway transportation project that has not yet begun. So they're, they're capped now, and I believe that's around 270 units that they're capped at currently.
And the Gallery at Godwin, how many units?
The Gallery at Godwin, I have those numbers. I believe that was 288 units.
Okay. So the reason I ask those questions, Mr. Moore, if we could get a copy or a list so the board could have it of those major units that we're just discussing, thank you for that, Spencer's Watch, Burbage Grant Apartments, Cedar Point, Godwin Park Development, the Gallery at Godwin, so that the board would kind of know about some of the development challenges, that can also help to lead us to make some decisions, not only about the size of the schools, but when these projected units are expected to be done, so that they could place it on the CIP, so we could kind of get that list. I was trying to take notes when you were saying it, but that's why I had to ask that follow-up. And then, last point to Dr. Brooks Buck's point, that's the challenge that we were facing. From the facility study, it stated that Florence Bowser Elementary School was going to be our next major area of growth. And they were spot-on, except for it actually happened 18 months early. So right now, for example, Florence Bowser has 916 students. That was projected to occur in 2027. And that also is supposed to trigger us having the conversation about expanding Florence Bowser, because we knew that was going to be an area of growth, and this is also part of the reason probably why Ms. Howell, Mr. Fawcett, has gotten conversations about the long lines on Nansman Parkway, because they've actually doubled the total number of car riders this year as compared to last year. And we actually believe, especially based on some of the highlights that you showed, that that area itself is going to continue to grow. And Creekside is right there at capacity. Northern Shores, as Dr. Brooks Buck mentioned, is already overcapacity. So this is something that we're going to have to, like, really take a look at. We don't have it listed on the school board CIP yet because it just wasn't timed. But now that we know that we've seen that large influx and the overwhelming impact that it's had on transportation in that area, that's something that I think, you know, the city manager and I have had some conversations about when it comes to traffic flow and traffic study, things of that nature. The last point before I turn it back over to Madam Chair is, we have kind of now set, because there were several conversations about taking a look at the overall capacity of a building versus functional capacity. And the city manager and I, and the team we've met, and I know that Mr. Moore and his team have a really strong grasp of that functional capacity. And, you know, just for everyone's information, that's going to change every year, depending on the needs of the house record, especially when it comes to our program classes and things for special education. But we also have to make space for our therapists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, things of that nature, which is part of the challenge that we're dealing with at Florence Bowser. We know we're going to have to move some of those things out, same process that we know that we are looking at at Booker T. Washington, where we had some staff that was stationed there. So as we continue to move forward with this, the facility study was pretty much spot-on. The only thing that they weren't aware of is some of those proffers that you just mentioned that were coming online from when we did the original study in 2021 to now. So with Dr. Brooks Buck asking that question, that's some of the information that we're going to need to help the board to be able to plan, really for the next three to five years, because we know that we have several of our schools, the mobile units, that are making them overcrowded. But now with this expediting of growth that we have going on, we're fearful that there's going to be even more, which would then lead to a greater challenge. You know, setting up a mobile unit is 125,000 to 150,000, and they're supposed to be temporary. And we've had some of them that have been in place for probably two decades or more. So that's some of the challenges that, from the school board side, that we're kind of dealing with. Because every time that we see that growth, Dr. Brooks Buck is exactly right, we have dozens, hundreds of kids that are coming out of the apartments, and just, just everywhere. And I think it's because of the, you know, current economic situation that people are living in, that maybe they can't afford a house right now. You know, it's definitely a seller's market, and I think that's creating some of those challenges. So if you could send us that list, or send it to Mr. Moore, so we can have it, so that we can share that with the board, I think that'd help them make some informed decisions. Thanks.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
My mind is blown, honestly. I think we're using two different calculators to begin with. To say new development isn't creating student increase as it once did, I sit in a different seat, and I see a very different picture. You also have to recognize, we live in a military community. So while we don't have new development always, we always have families PCSing in and out constantly. And they may leave with their two children, and they're replaced with five, as it's already been mentioned. Due to the economy, families are doubling up. So to look at, I'm only building this many houses, and everybody should traditionally have 2.5 children and a dog, is not realistic. And what's frustrating to me is, so, so you're saying the River Club was discussed and planned and approved and whatever back in 2003? So what money has been set aside to prepare Florence Bowser or Creekside and John Yates and Nansman River for the growth that is happening and is coming in the next couple of years? If this was planned 21 years ago, what has been set aside to prepare for? And I'm not just talking about building space. It's obvious, we have old buildings, we have small buildings. I'm talking about the fact that we need more teachers to staff the classrooms, because we have more kids in the classrooms. We need more bus drivers. We need more buses. There are so many factors that are not being calculated here when we are approving and discussing new development, and I feel like the burden is on us all alone. You guys are approving our operating budget, and that is, we're appreciative of that. That simply deals with what today looks like. It does nothing to help us prepare for tomorrow. And as these 10 things eventually, on the CIP, eventually get addressed, you do realize we're going to be starting right back over with the ones you fixed yesterday with this growth plan. When I look at these red spots on these slides, they are in our burdened areas. So where is the plan to relieve that burden when these houses go live, when they move in? Because you're, you're essentially kicking the can down the road. So we're scrambling to, to get Elephants Fork addressed, because it's been a problem for so long. Well, guess what? 10 years from now, we're going to be scrambling to get Florence Bowser addressed, Creekside addressed. And it's frustrating to continually operate from a place of, like, reaction, problem-solving, Band-Aids, patching holes, instead of collectively saying, okay, if we approve this, if we develop this, if we allow this, this is going to be the consequence. And so today, while we're planning to approve this, we also need to plan to buffer this. They need to be simultaneous conversations, not potholes that we patch up when our feet are held to the fire. There is nowhere else for Dr. Buck to borrow to go.
That's right.
In the city limits.
That's right.
There's not much room for, for Sleepy Hole to be rezoned between Cypress and Nansman, because those are exploding. And, and it's so frustrating to sit here and get this information built in a positive light when it's not positive for us. It's a heads-up that it's going to be chaos in a different place in a few years. So, I mean, those are just my points. I'm sorry it wasn't delivered more graciously, but honestly, this is insanity, doing the same thing over and over, decade after decade. At what point do we stop? We fix the problems we have now and simultaneously plan to not have those problems again later?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
First and foremost, thank you for the information. It's a wealth of information to take in.
Why is it today?
And I do understand the dilemma that one city council is in. I do understand that you can't take all of your budgeting dollars and just build schools, and we've been known for excellent schools, and the other things that you have to fund are not funded. I get it. This is where my concern is, and I'm going to address the question you made, you know, with proffers, and please correct me if my understanding of the working of it is wrong. The developer pays proffers if, at the time of occupancy, there is no capacity at the school that is impacted. Am I correct with that?
That depends on how the proffer is accepted at the time of rezoning. However, more often than not, language is not contained within that proffer, that it would go away, so they would be obligated to make that payment.
Has that traditionally been the case? Because a couple of times in meetings past, when that question came up, there was a different response. So I just want to make sure, and I understand that things change, I ain't trying to throw no bat in the fire, but I just want to make sure that I have a working knowledge of how we operate, because that's going to determine what I'm going to say next.
If that language is baked into the proffer and accepted as part of a rezoning, then it would be evaluated at the time of certificate of occupancy. So there would be the potential that they would not. However, traditionally, in those circumstances, that language was not contained within a proffer statement, and thus, they would have to seek an amendment to their existing proffer through city council action.
Okay.
If circumstances have changed.
Okay. So what I'm going to ask is, maybe then, we ask our local governing body to explore the option of including the language that those funds are still earmarked to the school division, whether or not there's capacity at the time of occupancy or not. The school system, we don't have, we, we don't have the opportunity to generate our own revenue. You know, I said before, we're like the, the old-school version of The Housewife. We wait for the money to be given to us, and we make, do what's given to us. I will ask, and I've asked this before, and I'm going to go on the record again, asking that both bodies, let's not kick the can. We're here now, we can make some realistic change now. Let's open up the books and see what the development is like, and let's strategically plan together. For an example, the virgin land on White Marsh Road, that is going to potentially be new development for residents, okay, let's address, let's put a school in this vacant land, and let's earmark and make it a walkable community, so that way, we can do safe routes of schools. We don't have to have a lot of buses coming in the community. It's a lot of forethought being taken in versus, yes, 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 now how do we fix the issue that we just welcomed? I understand growth is necessary in order to address these things, because you need the revenue. I get it. But what I want to see us do is a little more strategic planning collectively. I said two years ago that Chucka Tuck is going to be the new Harborview, because that's the growth zone. I mean, the other, the area in the Northern End is tapped out, and Smithfield is booming. Where do you meet at? And you're seeing the development starting to come that way. Chucka Tuck has Oakland, and that's one of our oldest buildings, it's just got lipstick on it. But the land is cheaper there now than it will be a couple of years from now, once the development goes. The man that makes it, ain't making the land at the rate he made it before. So it's cheaper to go and buy a farm and sit on the land, as, you know, we do with some of the other properties that our municipality may have, than to wait for development to come around and take the value up and then try to go after the land. So with the maps that you suggested, I see a lot of growth, but I want to see the numbers. I like maps, but I'm a figures person. I want to see the figures. It's hard to look at these maps and understand realistically how it's going to impact us. It's good to know that- Um, it's good to know that Dr. Gordon and, uh, City Manager Moore got together and they have a working understanding of how we determine capacity. But I have a question, what is in place to ensure that they get together annually to make sure we understand how we determine capacity? Because if the program change, we wanna make sure that the city is aware that the program has changed, so therefore capacity is impacted. I hope you follow what I'm saying, I know I gave you a lot. But I just wanna make sure you got us here now, that realistic plan we can put into place. So even if that's, I know when I was chair, we talked about there was land already identified for Elephant's Fork. How much does it cost, let's buy it. We know we can't put the school back in the same location. Let's make the moves that we know we need to make. Let's make the chess moves that we need to make. And that's what I'm asking.
Kevin, thank you.
I just, you know, every, everything that's been said, it needs to be said. And all of us have this passion, we want everything to be done that makes sense. Um, I just have a question, when you all are figuring out about building, like for instance, I'll just take Nansman Parkway. There's so many little houses coming up on Nansman Parkway. Like every time I ride by, I, oh, there's a new house, oh, there, there's another house. That's why the bears are in our yards, cuz we're taking their land, you know, they don't have anywhere to go. So what, what is the thought process? Um, is it that someone just says, hey, we wanna build a house here and there's one of those tall skinny houses that just go up? So, cuz I have a lot of people asking me, how are they building so many houses? I don't know, I don't, I don't do that. But I, you just said that you all give the, um, the permission for the land, you know, or, or whatever to be built. So I just think some people want to know even what is the process that it's just so many houses going up and just like you were seeing it like on White Marsh Road, um, where that vacant land has been there for the shopping center. Um, when we have food deserts, there's no grocery stores, and there's another whole big building that could be possibly be built, bringing a lot more people, a lot more traffic. Um, it's not just, um, Florence Bowser with traffic, but Nansman Parkway, Nansman River, I have to go through all three. And then sometime, which we're gonna, think I were gonna be rectifying this with the train, but to get caught by the train, same train three times. So finally, we're gonna be doing something about that cuz of all the, you know, the, the road work. But I just think people want to know, the residents that's been here for a long time, what is the process that every week there's a new house or a new development going on? I mean, we just wanna know the process. Is it just, hey, yeah, sure, you want that? Boom, and it's done. Because it has to be, yeah, that's what we say too. Um, it's like, it has to be a thought process. Um, like what is the end result? We see what it is right now, it's not working. So, um, I just think, speaking on behalf of people in the city that have asked me, I'm asking you all who make that decision, cuz I don't know. And maybe that's something we can put on the next agenda, or maybe you can bring it up yourself. Um, cuz I don't know when we will be meeting again jointly. But, um, that's just what I wanna say. Growth is great, but sometime we get so big, we can't even get out the chair or through the door cuz we're overweight. And right now Suffolk is overweight right now. Anyone else have anything to say on school board?
Um, if not, I'll try to explain the process.
Let me take this.
Go ahead.
I'll take it.
You sure? You don't want me to take it?
I have a problem. Take it. We have, of course, in, in our land use, we have two urban suburban development areas, which we all should be aware of, it's been around since nineteen ninety-eight. Um, in that, you have areas that are zoned, some are not zoned. Some have pre-existing, uh, rights, uh, prior to, uh, the urban suburban development areas when we've done the UDO, you know? So on the, on the tall skinny houses, those are old lots that existed from probably the county time. They're in residential neighborhoods. They have the right, the owner has a right to build on them or sell, for building. Um, and new developments, of course, when they come in, there probably needs rezoning. If they do a cluster, they need a conditional use permit to go with that. So that takes, um, uh, regulatory action by council, by the planning commission. And there's a lot of options, there's two different public hearings to go with those. So as far as, um, you know, the development of the city, uh, we've been following a pattern since, uh, at least nineteen ninety-eight on the urban suburban development areas. The, um, and, and to say that, um, you know, that we're not regulating or to imply that, I would say, or the way I took it, um, I would say is, um, a little bit of exaggeration. So, uh, but we are, um, issuing permits where people have their rights to build. We are having public hearings on area, areas that needs a rezoning or conditional use permit. But yes, um, we're developing, we're a, a city of opportunity. We are in the middle of the seven-five-seven region. You can get from Suffolk to Newport News, from Suffolk to the beach, to Suffolk to Norfolk in a very short period of time. That's why we're so attractive. And so that's why people want to move. We still have villages, we still have rural areas, we still have urban areas. Uh, we have something that favors everyone's desire. So I think we're a city of opportunity. And to say that, um, we're not thinking, we're not planning, that we've let it get away from us. Um, you know, I've been here for twenty-nine years, so I would question those statements. So, uh, I don't mean to be harsh, I could probably deliver this in a little bit better way. But, uh, um, the city's moving forward in a, in a good direction, yes. We have growing pains, as any community does, as the beach did in the seventies, as Chesapeake did in the eighties and nineties. Um, and some, and, and you look west of us, we talk about our traffic issues, a lot of folks are passing through Suffolk going to Isle of Wight or going to Newport News. You have construction on the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel right now. People are using the Merrimack or they're using the James when they're coming from the peninsula. So we're seeing a little bit more on seventeen. Will we continue to see that when the bridge tunnels open back up? We might see, uh, we, we might, we might see a little reduction of it. Cuz people are finding the easiest path, they go to work. If they live in the peninsula, they go to work in Norfolk, they're coming through Suffolk now. So, but I just felt I needed to address how I felt. And I appreciate your moments here for my commercial. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam Moore. Um, thank you for that explanation. Um, so with the proffer money, do we have some now? Where is the proffer money?
It's in the, Charles, you wanna address that for me? I hope I didn't just put you on the spot. I don't think I did.
Yeah, the proffer money, uh, is in the city's, uh, capital fund balance. Uh, as it comes in, uh, it is put into that fund, uh, and held there, uh, until an eligible project, uh, is approved. Uh, we've currently used, uh, proffer funding for debt service on the northern, uh, Colonel Fred Cherry Middle School, uh, project.
Okay.
The past several years.
Thank you, sir.
So, so let me be clear. When we built Fred Cherry, some of the money was proffer money? Or is it for, are we putting some of the proffer money in for payers that are being made? Or was it just done when we built Fred Cherry?
Charles, is part of that going to, uh, debt service also?
Or debt.
Yeah, it's going towards the debt service, uh, on the new, uh, middle school up there.
Up for your chair. Okay.
Council, any questions or comments? Um, if not, I got a few comments. Uh, let's talk about where the houses come from, the city manager. Very good explanation, but for the public, I think maybe we need to clarify it a little further so everybody understands how houses just seem to pop up out of the ground. To start with, every piece of dirt in the city of Suffolk has a zoning designation right now. Any parcel, anywhere, you can look at the city assessor's site, which is where I normally get it, and it'll give you a zoning designation. Could be B, be one, be two, M, could be RL, could be residential zoning, could be a commercial zoning, whatever it is. That's what's allowed by right. In other words, if you can put a round peg in a round hole, if it's zone residential, it's allowed for residential under the, the parameters of that particular residential designation as it, as it relates to densities and setbacks and UDO requirements. Those are allowed by right. So yeah, one can just pop up there. If it's been zoned like that for twenty years and the landowner didn't do anything with it, and someone buys the land or they decide to build, guess what? It just pops up. And as long as it can go through the process, as long as it adheres to the zoning regulations, to the UDO, it goes through planning, the site plans are approved. If it does need a conditional use permit, those are the ones that are allowed by right. If for something that we're changing, it just doesn't happen. It goes through a process, it's gonna take about six months at least. You're gonna get site plans submitted, it has to go through the planning department and it'll go to the planning commission with all of the, um, I call them categories, all the concerns that go into every application, be its effect on schools, transportation, uh, what else? We got schools, we got transportation, stormwater, roads, um, fiscal impact, all those considerations are part of the application. It goes through the planning department. It's presented there, comes to us with either a recommendation for approval, banal staff report, and then we go through the same process. So that's the only way something can change. Is it goes through that process. That process involves public hearings. The larger projects, we implemented a, a new system about a year and a half ago that slows the whole process down for the, for the larger ones, the one hundred, one hundred, one hundred guidelines. Uh, that will slow it down an extra month in planning. And also, we received the information sixty days before we normally did. Plus, it allows the public additional time to weigh in on those changes that have been applied for. Even the little rezoning signs we had, we used to have the little blue ones. And we got complaints, the little blue ones get blown over and the weeds grow up. Now we get great big orange ones. The size of St. Louis, they're like four feet wide, big orange ones. You know, so we have implemented a lot in the last couple of years to keep the public informed. So these things just don't pop out of everywhere. So I wanna get that straight to begin with. As far as s- school enrollment, we're just gonna talk about school enrollment. Yes, we graduate a thousand, but then we bring in a thousand. So the population, the school population, the school population stays about the same. If it's outward a thousand and inward a thousand, it's a bucket, it's just like a bucket of water. You get a four gallon bucket of water, you bu- dump a gallon of water out of it, you put a gallon of water back in it, you're right back where you started from. And that's kind of from a capacity standpoint. Now, I'm not talking about where it is, but from a capacity standpoint, we have been fairly stagnant for a long time, for about a decade. As far as capacity, the numbers don't lie, population, population. The population in Suffolk in two thousand thirteen was eighty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-two. Today, it's a hundred thousand six hundred and fifty-nine. So in ten years, the population of the city of Suffolk has increased about fifteen percent. If the same increase was relevant to the school system, it would've gone from fourteen thousand to sixteen thousand. But it didn't.
It went from twelve.
We're still around the fourteen thousand. So we're just talking about capacity. I'm not saying we're not overcrowded there and we're not overcrowded here. When it comes to trying to get a grip on student generation, that has been an issue that I think we've dealt with for ten or fifteen years. We've dealt with it from the developer standpoint, their numbers don't match up with our numbers. A lot of those numbers don't seem to match up with what the enrollment numbers are either. So we need to find a way to determine not only if a two-bedroom house does, like you said, two and a half kids and, and a puppy or whatever it is, that's fine. It'll produce that many school-aged kids. But we need to come up with a way to determine under what circumstances would those school-aged kids not necessarily end up in a public school? Cuz that's what it's about. We need, okay, these are, these developments are creating this many school-aged children. And what we should be looking at, in addition to that, these developments in that particular area under these circumstances are going to generate this many students that will attend public schools for whatever that reason is. I don't know what it is. But obviously, there's a reason for it. There has to be. We can't go through a fifteen percent population increase and basically almost a zero percent school enrollment increase. So we need to get a better grip on that. I don't know what we need to do to find out. I mean, this study that we've got from two thousand one, we spent four hundred and thirty thousand dollars on, is probably not very accurate right now, there are some student generation rates. Uh, but we need to do that. And then we need to seriously consider all the options that may be available to accommodate wherever it is that that student generation is going to be. I think we know kinda where it's gonna be. But from there, we need to consider, I'm not saying do it, I'm saying consider all the options that are available to us. And I'm not gonna bring up the two nasty words, but we need to consider everything, uh, to try to make that work. In regards to our pipeline study, um, I appreciate getting this, but I don't really think, well, I think what the school system needs is a more concise pipeline study, which we've gotten before, which has a breakdown of every neighborhood. When it was approved, whether it's active, whether it's inactive, what the total capacity is, what's been built out so far and what's coming. And that's, this isn't gonna do it. You know, and I know we've got it, we just need to get it out. And I think everybody in the, I think the school system needs it worse than we do. But just like Hillpoint, it'll show you that it was approved in, what was it, nineteen, whatever it was. It was approved a long time ago. It was fourteen hundred some homes, and right now, they've built out eleven hundred some and there's three hundred coming. Or there may be another one that was approved for three hundred that they haven't started yet. And that's the information that's gonna be important to the school system. Cuz in active development, they may have started off at a thousand and they've already, they've already done five hundred, you can pretty much count, there's another five hundred coming and are coming pretty soon. Versus that other development that hasn't even started yet. You know, for long-term purposes, you can look at it. You also have to look at the feasibility of that particular development coming online. Cuz there could be someone who is speculating on a piece of dirt somewhere out where there is no infrastructure, that bought a hundred acres to sit on and maybe build, you know, two hundred houses on it. But it's not gonna happen until the infrastructure shows up and the infrastructure's way down the road. Could be ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, maybe never. Because people do speculate like that. They'll speculate, they may have it rezoned, it takes a while to bring all these things. So those are the kind of things that we need to look at. As far as building school, I mean, I'm all about doing everything we can possibly do to take care of the schools. Our situation is not like any other locality in the Commonwealth of Virginia and probably in the nation for that matter. We can look at Norfolk, we can look at Virginia Beach, they got seventy-five-year-old schools, they got a hundred-year-old schools. They got a lot more money coming in. I mean, look at Maric, it's a hundred some years old, they haven't figured out what to do with it yet. You know, Virginia Beach is the same way, they have several schools seventy-five years old. So it's an issue. Until we get help from the state and until we get help from the feds, we will never be able to do what we need to do. I think everybody knows what you need to do. But that's limited to your ability to perform on what needs to be done. And that's, you know, whether you like it or not, I mean, it's the money end of it. It's always the money. Uh, but there's certainly not a will not to do it. Uh, but we've gotta continue to work together so we can get the absolute most that we possibly can, um, out of the money that we do have available. Uh, so then, as I said, I'll shed a little bit of light on how these houses pop up. And like I said, I like, Chairman, ready, the idea with V dot, I'm not gonna be able to sleep tonight. to sleep tonight and I'm going to pester the city manager and see what we can do about that. That could kill a couple birds at one stone. So anyhow, that's all I got to say. Let's go ahead and move to our next subject.
Madam Chair, Mayor Doeman.
Transportation. Yes.
As I might, as you're talking, I just wanted to bring up a couple of points if I can, if there's an opportunity here. I think for me, there may be some misperception here. I would like to add also, when you're talking about the pipeline, before Dr. Gordon actually even spoke, I wrote down my own point on here that I would like to have, again, it's spelled out, the developments. And I like it in conjunction with this map and instead of things being written on the map in a way that we can't see it, perhaps putting numbers there. So if you have number one, this is the next, first one coming down here, so it's located number ones here, so that we can actually see where it's at on the map and see what we're anticipating, the number of units and when it should take place, when it should be fulfilled, that pipeline, that would be incredibly helpful. But my perception that I just want to bring out, you know, I wonder when the city looks at these buildings and these developments, what consideration is given to the school system at the time of negotiations? I know everything has a dollar sign on it, but somewhere, I mean, I guess from my perspective, it feels like perhaps, I'm not sure to what degree, and I'd like to be enlightened on this, the city takes into consideration the impact of the new developments on the schools, anticipates wear and tear, need for growth and expansion, you know, need for renovations of the buildings with regards to HVAC systems or things that are going to be going down, takes that into consideration. Because with every new unit that we build and the increase of students in those schools, there's more wear and tear. And so when you're factoring in the need to put in roads for those, I mean, when you do a development of new housing, obviously, you need to put in new roads and look at the roadways to get there. That's factored in, that has to be done because nobody can move into those houses. I think equally, if you're fact, if you're considering families moving into developments, then you need to also consider, there needs to be some money going to the development and building and enhancing the schools in order to support that as well. Maybe that's done, but when I look at our CIP here, we meet as a school board and present to you what our needs are, it's needs-based. I don't see this city coming saying, this is what's happening in our city, here's where you're going to need this down the road, we are, we are working towards this because we have put, you know, with this development, we've got money for roads and we've got money for the impact on the schools with this. Instead, it feels like as a school system, we are reactionary and having to grovel for the needs of what is breaking down and falling apart. And it's an emergency situation, so it doesn't feel that it's, that it is necessarily anticipatory. So I guess my question is, how does the city proactively prepare our schools for the upcoming growth? How is that considered in the negotiations? When you're negotiating with the builder, that should be part of what is anticipated for the monetary negotiations? Because there should be something in there that is going to, more than just proffers, perhaps? I mean, you know, you can take or leave a contract, again, this may sound naive, but it does feel like we are, we are having to grovel for the money on this end instead of the city being the provider for the needs when you're, when you're considering this, the impact on the schools. I hope that makes sense.
So I think this may clear up some things because we're kind of tossing around two different things and there's some legal parameters that we have to work through. So members of council and members of the school board. We have two different things. So roads and other public improvements are different from what we are proffers. So when we're talking about a development, we have talked about the difference between re-subdividing or subdividing a development versus rezoning a development. If we just, if someone already has the zoning for residential development and is only filing to subdivide that into multiple lots to build houses on, we cannot collect any money for that. We can ask for dedication for roads, we can ask for dedication for public improvements like sewer and water, but the General Assembly doesn't give us the authority to get any contribution towards schools or fire or police. So that only can come from tax dollars. If we're talking about a rezoning, so someone wants to move to a new zoning category, whether it's commercial to move to residential or moving from one residential that requires a larger lot to one that requires smaller lots, the developer can voluntarily proffer money for schools to do away with the lack of that public facility, but we can't require a certain amount. We have a formula for something for city council to decide whether or not they've satisfied that deficiency in the public facility, but proffers are voluntary. And the developer has the right to amend those proffers at any time during the history of that project. So the General Assembly has limited us in some ways of looking at getting more contribution from developers on these projects. I hope that kind of clarifies at least the legal parameters of it.
In the 12, I'm glad you explained it because I was sitting here saying I thought we couldn't get proffers and I'm glad you explained the difference. And I want to make clear that I have never been an anti-growth person and I haven't been because I realize the city can't thrive and grow if people don't move in and out, it will die. And that's not what I want because I'm a property owner here and a taxpayer here as well. I do want to make something clear in case people didn't hear what I said. When I got on the board in 2013, I started, I ran in 2012 the first time, there were 12,000 students here. 12,000 have graduated and we have 14,500. That's an 8.454% increase in the number of students that we have. There are, or there were in 2023, 900 students in our largest private school in Suffolk. If people are coming and having to double up and having to live in apartments instead of homes, chances are, they're not in a position to pay private school tuition. Our smallest private school had six graduates last year, to our 1,000 graduates last year. We need to talk about some things that are clear. Our public school here, public school system here, has done some marvelous things. We have done some great things. Our students got $46.7 million in scholarship offers, which is much more than some of our neighbors with much larger systems had or calculated or bothered to count. Our students have done a wonderful job. The school in my neighborhood, as overcrowded as it was, was a national blue ribbon school. We have done, like I said, a lot of great things in Suffolk and I will never put them down. This is, I'm sure, my last conversation here, so I'm going to say what I need to say. I think that because our growth has been the way it has, it's caused a lot of problems. But my concern here is that we want our schools, council members and citizens, to grow along with our city. We're not opposed to growth. We just want our schools to grow along with our city. And as we build our beautiful new buildings, we want our schools to grow along with our city. Because we believe that we give you something to work with. I heard the vice chair say, we are a military community and that's, as a military family and a military wife, that's one of the reasons our formula doesn't work. Because people are not counting the people who move in and out of here. We have the largest naval installation in the world in our community here. So our cities are impacted in totally different ways in tight water than other cities are impacted in other places. So the general formula doesn't work the way it should. And I know what our studies show, but our studies, as an educational researcher, I know that some studies don't fit some situations and there's no way for people to figure out what the military is going to do. They've dominated my life for many, many years. My son is a colonel in the army. We never know, depending on how the world is, what's going to happen or where they're going to be. So there's something that we need to understand serving that community. As much as the city manager would like to give us what we want, as much as the superintendent and all of us are working as hard as we can, there's, we don't have a crystal ball. So we work as hard as we can with what we have. Mayor Doeman, what you said was excellent. We have to work with the state, we have to work with federal legislators, I've tried to do that in the 12 years that I've been on the board, to try to get as much as we can for our area. Because as I said, I think last year, nobody has the $500 billion that our representative, Bobby Scott, said to us is needed and said to the federal government when he asked for money for infrastructure. No city has the amount of money we need to build what we need at the time that we need. I think Suffolk is in a good position. My home city that you reference, Moore High School, in my home city, should be condemned because it is 100 years old and it's in terrible need of repair. And when I looked at it, I thank God that no city in Suffolk looks like the inside of that school, that we are not subjecting any of our students to what those students had to go through last year. I'm not proud of that at all because that is where I was educated, born and raised in Norfolk. And I'm glad Suffolk's not in that situation. Not one high school looks like that. I'm proud of us for what we have done. But we've got so much more work to do and we have to work together. And whether I'm here or not, I can do much more damage at that mic than I can sitting up there because I have to be polite. And what I've learned in these 12 years is, I could be much ruder and much louder from there than I can from up here. I want us to know that we have to pull this thing together and I want us to. And when I say to you what I say to you, we have to find a way to do a better job of looking at, we can go in the Nansman Borough, into the water, into Newport News and Chesapeake or into Portsmouth, that's where we have to go. There is no redistricting that's going to help us. Because my councilman lives in an area where my students have to go to another elementary school because our elementary school has been overcrowded since the day the doors opened. It was built too small. And we need to look at what we're doing and we've got to make this match. We've got to make this work. Thank you for allowing my speech, I appreciate it.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just have one question. I was wondering if we had, as far as the school division, had a representation in the planning commission? Because listening to some of the concerns brought forth by some of the board members, I believe if SPS had a better presence at the planning commission level, we would at least know what's coming down the pipeline, how we can pivot. So if not, I was wondering, is it possible for the local government, for you all, to invite us to have representatives from our end to participate in the discussion? Because I know a lot of things that we're asking questions about now could really be hammered down in the planning commission, when the developers are going before the commission, presenting their site plan and their goals and objectives, when it's open for citizens to have, you know, what do you think about this and what do you think about that? I'm just trying to find ways that we can alleviate some of this load.
We have Friday morning meetings, staff does gather to look at new development projects, whether commercial or residential. We do send out, we have a list of inviteees, the school, the school staff is on that list. So that is a good opportunity there to get it on the early stages because that's when it's just coming in the door. And then it works through that process before we have land use meetings and then before it even gets a planning commission. So that is probably the best opportunity to get it on the front door of that, is being, attending those Friday morning meetings.
Okay. So going forward, what I would like, if possible, is that the invitation goes to the superintendent and the chair to make sure that SPS is there. So that way, we know how to do our CIP, we understand what's coming down and we're not, you know, being blown away by it when we see the signs coming up, future site. Because to be honest, once it's approved by council, it's a little too late for us to get our opinions in a bunch and start complaining. The time we should be voicing our opinions is really the public hearing part of it for planning commission as well as city council. So I definitely thank you for the information.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
In listening to the conversation that we're having.
Can you pull that closer teeth that we can hear?
And in listening to the conversation around this table today and listening what Mr. Board Member Riddick said, would it not be prudent for the school board to maybe put together a committee that is dedicated to being part of the planning commission so that we always have somebody that is there at every meeting and that can bring the concerns of the school board to things that are happening in the planning commission?
So just off the top of my head, I don't think you want everybody at every meeting because lots of times, they don't have anything to do with development, there's a lot more that goes on. Matter of fact, I can't, development-wise, I can't remember, it's been at least a couple of months since we've even looked at one, I think. So probably just keeping an eye on it. Like Board Member Riddick suggested, when they had the early meetings or an announcement, maybe the way to do it.
Yeah. My recommendation would be, it can be done in two ways. I'm reminded of, and this is no slight to Dr. Gordon because I believe we do have representation going, I'm not for certain, but I know for certain Dr. Whitney would go and sit in the meetings. So that's not a job that we as a board would do. That's the day-to-day operations where, you know, Dr. Gordon or his destiny will go sit in at the planning commission and report back to the board on pending development that will have an impact on our school system and provide a recommendation to us. We don't want to impede in what the planning commission's function is, but if we have concerns, for example, the development that's going on White Marsh Road, if we had any concerns about it while it's going through the planning commission, that's where those school board members, along with their council member, could tag team and say, hey, look, this is our concerns, how we can mitigate this, how we can work it out. And at that point, to be honest, I believe it's the most fruitful stage to even get the developer to say, hey, well, we're going to do this new community, y'all complaining about the kids coming from one school to the store, well, can you put up a fence? We don't have it in our budget, can you do it? And they, okay, we'll do it. So I think that's the two ways I would recommend doing it. One, the superintendent goes and report back to the board and a formal report during his report. And that the board chair and the superintendent are invited from the city manager at the Friday morning meetings annually. Whether we're impacted or not, you're annually there. So it's a routine, so we know what's going on in our city, so we can stop operating as two separate bodies in an unharmonious fashion, but to come together with some sense of unity to move forward.
May I ask a question? Are the meetings open to the public, planning, meeting, planning commission? So they're open to the public, so anybody can attend who would like to attend the planning commission meeting? They aren't something that you need an invitation for because they're open to the public, so anyone who is interested. And the agenda is published, so you know what they're going to be talking about. So I think that that's not a problem that we have because we are, everybody's invited who wants to participate and the agenda is published too. So if there's an item on the agenda, just like any other citizen, we can go talk about it. If somebody's talking about the Nansman Borough building there, and I know that they, I see the hearing signs around when anybody is going to put anything up in our neighborhood, there's a post around besides the post through homeowners association, there's a post through civic organizations, and there are signs around the neighborhood when something's going to be discussed. So I don't think it's a matter of people not sharing. The city appears to be sharing with us what it is they're planning to do if we want to go and attend the meetings. We don't need a special invitation because we can go.
I want to make, if I may, want to make a clarification. We have the Friday morning staff meetings that are the early, early on meetings that when the projects come in, that would be the one I'd be sending the information on over and making sure that Dr. Gordon is aware of it and the chair is aware of it. And of course, you're correct, the planning commission's open to everyone. But I think it's the early on meetings before it even gets the planning commission where you're in on the front door that's key.
Okay, do we have any other questions or comments? If not, we'll move to major transportation projects and draft master transportation plans, Mr. Manager.
Yes, Director of Public Works, Robert Lewis, has presented this. Is this a go with some key projects that are under construction or headed our way that will have an impact potentially to the school's transportation efforts in the near future?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. So as we talk about this, certainly, growth
So as we talk about this, certainly growth in our city creates a lot of issues and certainly the school board is very interested in the school side of things. And in my side of the house is transportation. So that's the other thing that is always out there competing for funds. And what we want to do is just take a few minutes and share with you all an overview of the many transportation projects that are ongoing within our city. So the first off is Holland Road, Route 58 widening. It's been going on almost three and a half years. The contract end is in sight. It comes up in December. Not at this point 100% sure that all construction will be fully completed at that time. And certainly that's a contract issue, but we're well on the way. Yeah, and that's about 3.1 miles. We're widening that highway from a four-lane road to a six-lane road, redoing all the intersections, upgrading all the traffic signals, brand-new control equipment, brand-new street lighting. And again, it will certainly move a lot better traffic and a lot more efficiently once we get everything back operational, operating properly. So some of this stuff is not operating at its optimum during this construction time. Right behind that is the Shoulders Hill Bridge Road intersection project. We had actually hoped to have been a little bit further along on that. We got delayed as we dealt with some utility issues out there with some of our franchise utilities, but that is well underway. Again, that is widening part of Bridge Road from a four-lane road to a six-lane road. It's widening Shoulders Hill Road to a four-lane divided. It's greatly changing the configuration and the turn lanes on that intersection. And again, it's about a year and a half work going on out there. So we're anticipating sometime next winter to be finishing that project up. Following over behind us, I heard somebody talk about one of my second favorite topics, which is trains. So we've been dealing with trains for many, many years. And certainly as the Port of Virginia continues to grow and expand, the quantity of trains that are coming out of the terminal is only going to increase. And this line is actually a direct line out of the terminal of Virginia. And it doesn't really matter whether these trains end up with CSX or with Norfolk Southern. This is the line that bring every one of them out. So they're all passing through our city. Again, they're anywhere from one to two miles long, extremely impactful. We were very successful that the state came back and offered us some additional funds and we were able to get going. That bridge is well underway. They're driving piles in. You should see some bridge structure going up in the very near future. Most of the roadway is out there and again, has some additional paving to be done. But again, we're hoping next fall to have that road project open. That'll be one spot that you'll be able to get back and forth across that train line without having to stop for a train. Nansman Parkway, Sleepy Hole Road, Bennett's pasture. This again is one we spent quite a bit of time on. This is in front of Nansman River High School and right in those two key intersections. As you're well aware, construction is well underway. We've concentrated this summer, as this project gets kicked off, of trying to do the vast majority of the work that's going to impact the school directly. So you've seen a lot of construction out there near the football stadium that's ongoing. We've worked very hard to get things put back together as best we can. As school started back up, and there's certainly still some work ongoing. Ultimately, this is going to, most impactfully, change the configuration, the entrance and exit out of Nansman River High School. The traffic signal out on Nansman Parkway is going away. We're building a new access on the Sleepy Hole, and that'll put all the traffic out. Sleepy Hole will then become a signalized intersection. What that really does, and as we watch this work, there's not enough space on the school property to really queue traffic up. So when the light turns green to get traffic out, by shifting around, we'll put them at an intersection that's truly set up and has capacity to handle that volume of traffic and move them in a much more efficient manner. We're also dealing with some turning movement changes down at Bennett's pasture road, getting rid of some conflicts. And again, we think, in addition, looking at the operation with school buses, we think this is going to be a much more useful and impactful increase, improving the operation of this intersection, not degrading it out there for us as we go forward. Again, we're hoping next winter this would be complete and we are well underway. There's a project over here just on the east side, west side of downtown, Pitch Kettle Road. We're trying to finish Pitch Kettle Road up. That's kind of a neighborhood project, but it's also a gateway project. Realigning that road, getting it to where it's a much more modern highway, it has better capacity. Again, doing some additional work at the intersection with Constance Road, adding some turn lanes in. And again, this is, we are under utility removal right now, so we're shifting utilities around. We hope to start construction soon, if I can get my utilities to cooperate. And again, we're hoping fall of '26 for that work to be done. Pewsville. Pewsville drainage has been an issue for a long time. Pewsville has had a lot of concern about drainage issues in there, and we've been working on this for a number of years. We've been very successful in getting not only city money allocated to this, but also federal and state money. I'm happy to report we are just before signing the contract and hopefully within 60, 90 days, this will go under construction and again, start this work in this neighborhood. Goblin Boulevard, again, one of our corridors that for a long time was kind of a sleeping giant in our city. It just, it was a four-lane highway. It just kind of sat there. I used to wonder, where's all the traffic? And overnight, all the traffic showed up. So what we're doing out there, and I'm going to go back and tell a little history of myself, back when I graduated from college, I went to work for VDOT. One of the first projects I worked on was this road. It was designed to be a six-lane highway. And it was also associated with some stuff that was going on in Hill Point that has since did not go to fruition and has fell apart. And VDOT made a decision years ago, we don't need a six-lane road, we're going to only build a four-lane road. So somebody, they actually made a really wise decision. What they did is they took the two extra lanes out of the center. So that highway has an extra wide median in it today. So the beauty of it is, is we're moving forward, we're generally going to just go back and put lanes in the center, back where they should have were originally designed for, should minimize the impact, should minimize the impact to utilities and so forth. But again, we're going to have a six-lane highway. Then you said, well, what about up there at the interchange? Well, again, that is, again, you've got a six-lane road feeding into an interchange. It's very problematic. So one of the things we're looking at at a couple of sites in the city is something called a diverging diamond interchange. First time you see that, first time you drive through it, you're going to think, Mr. Lewis has lost his mind. But I would share with you, Google this, Google diverging diamond and watch some of the videos out there. The first one I ever drove through was at Route 15 and 64, just outside of Charlottesville. Being a transportation engineer, I'd get on and off of that several times when my daughter was in school. And I'd drive through and I was like, something's different. What's different? And even as an engineer, it took me about the full time. I said, let me look at the aerial view of this. And as soon as I saw the aerial, I'm like, oh, it's a diverging diamond. No wonder it worked so well. It's going to be something new. It is going to take a little bit of a learning. But again, I believe in the end, we're going to find it's much more impactful as far as moving traffic in a much more efficient manner and cutting delay. It should help a lot going into our schools out there because again, we should be able to minimize the queuing. As we talk about that, we're all very much aware of the issues ongoing at Route 460. And again, another major corridor in and out of our city. One thing the manager and I like to share, it's really impactful piece of information. In Hampton Roads region, there's essentially two ways out of Hampton Roads. You either go up the peninsula up 64 or you come west towards Suffolk. Well, out of the traffic coming west in Suffolk, part of it goes up 460 and part of it goes down 58. In recent years, we get more traffic coming down 460, 58 corridor than 64s get going to Richmond. So again, a lot of this traffic is coming our way, it's passing through our region. And again, with the Port 460 project, it gave us a great opportunity to look at expanding that road. We are working very diligently right now on the design to widen that road again to a six-lane highway. It will also entail a diverging diamond at interchange, again, to greatly increase the capacity. And we've been very, very successful in finding funds for that. Bridge Road, I probably should have changed these slide orders just a little bit. So we talked just a moment ago about Shoulders Hill Road and what we're doing. Done doing any good to widen the intersection if you don't widen the roads that feed into it and out of it. So again, over the next period of time, we have a couple of projects up there. This is Phase Two, a bridge road. This would go east from the intersection we're currently building going towards Harborview Boulevard, but not quite to Harborview Boulevard. And then additionally, we continue to look at future things. We're going to have something to cancel in the very near future to look at the Harborview Interchange and some ideas up there of how we can fix that. And ultimately, we continue to press the state every chance we get about the bridges, the Hazelwood Bridge and the Goblin Bridge, that those need to be widened and completed because again, that's a bottleneck for us. As I close, I do want to share just a moment to talk, just a second, about funding. So the city, we have been very, very fortunate over the last number of years in competing for transportation funds. So many of the projects that I build in transportation, there's absolutely no way a locality can afford to pay for and build these types of roads. So we're always out there seeking funding. We have been very fortunate that we have gotten a lot of money from both the Commonwealth of Virginia and the state, I'm sorry, and the federal government through many of these projects. So we, over the next 10 years, we've got about $264 million worth of improvements in the plan. And again, the vast majority of that's coming from other places. But one of the things that's key to that is we have to have some local dollars in there too. We have to leverage these federal and state dollars with our dollars. And for good or for bad, for every dollar I need, there's a dollar you need and we're competing in the same category. So again, we're all working towards the same goal of improving our city, but just recognize we all out there have needs also. And with that, I'm certainly available with any questions you may have.
Yeah, I was going to talk about the Crittenden Road, Cedar Point realignment.
Yes, sir. I did not bring that up. Crittenden Road is getting ready to be, go into construction also. We're realigning that. It's going to line up with Cedar Point, get rid of that really crazy intersection in the, anyway, everybody, I see everybody smiling, so you know what I'm talking about. You're in-
Base track.
You know, in a roller coaster through there. We're getting back to a much better intersection, so that's ongoing. There's many more projects in our city that I just didn't put on the list, but those are just kind of the major ones. But thank you.
Where we are, where we're starting, it's utilities to be moved now.
Utilities are, I was told last week that we think we've got everything done except for one telephone pedestal, and that should go to construction in the very near future.
So the next couple of years, we should see some?
Yeah, I hope the next couple of years that is completed.
Council, any questions or comments? Check your school board here.
Madam Chair, I just have one question. And I'm sad to see that intersection go. It's a lot of fun on a school bus, I got to tell you. You're getting rid of the light that's in front of Nansman River right now, eventually?
Yes, ma'am.
Will that remain an access point?
No, ma'am. Actually, through consultation with school staff and the principal, we've actually decided to do away with that altogether and shift all the traffic over to Sleepy Hole Road for safety purposes.
Okay. But the bus ramp, will that remain?
The bus ramp will remain the same. And actually, one of the other benefits of this project, and I forgot to mention it, is we're expanding the student parking lot in there. We're getting, I would say it's 40 or 50 more spaces out of that. So again, we were able to expand that parking lot for the students. I know that's always a challenge in there, give them the new entrances back. And again, there'll be sidewalks and so forth out there to support all of this.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that access point was closed if the light was removed?
Yes, ma'am.
School board members have any other questions, comments? If not, we'll move to our final item for this evening, transfer SPS property to the city.
Yes, Mayor and Chair and members of the school board and council. Obviously, and the city appreciates the school board having turned back Frehney Avenue, and I'll give you a little update where we are on that. Of course, I believe Superintendent, you're still using portion of that for fueling, or the opposite, are we all back together?
Ms. Forisman, I'm Mr. Nate Perry. Refresh my memory, when does that last fuel tank come out of Frehney Avenue? Do we know?
The fuel tank itself is going out to bid it now. So we don't have a firm date yet, but I can tell you that we're close to starting that project. I don't expect three, four months to get that tank in. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Of course, well, the C staff right now, we're working and starting to get our environmental engineers together because as you're aware, that building, it's got some age to it and it's got probably some history of different materials in it that we'll need to abate prior to tearing it down. So that's where we're at right now on Frehney. And of course, the long-term plans, that building would be demolished and area graded and some green area that goes next to the East Suffolk facility that we have there. The other, in April, on April 10th, what we talked about also was Driver. But as we had talked through, I guess earlier, there's still some discussions on that piece of property. And so that piece of property has not been turned over to the city yet. No action on that, I believe, by the school board. I believe when we were discussing, there could be something in November. Was that my understanding?
Yes, that's what we were kind of targeting. I think that's going to be based on some of the feedback that the board is going to receive at their October meeting, based on what I had mentioned earlier from the CIP discussion.
So this topic's a real brief topic. I think that just summed it up, I guess, where we're at. And we'd be happy to take any questions, which may-
I don't have any questions. My comment in regard to Driver being considered for SAO, my concern in fact is the parking because every night of the week in the spring and the fall, there's an abundance of cars there for Little League. And so that's going to overlap with the workday for our staff. I don't, I don't see that as the best option. I mean, it may be a last resort if that's where we land, but it doesn't seem like a good one from where I stand as far as the location of it, the amount of parking available, and the amount of work that will be needed to make that building usable.
If the property was turned over to the city, it would be our vision that that would become more of a recreational area with Little League there, plus maintaining the gym facility that's there. I know there's some use still by Nansman River Wrestling Team there, so there would be some joint use there of that facility. But I would not see that portion of the school being torn. The gym portion would remain in our, from staff in my opinion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have some viewpoints that may differ from others. If we're talking about repurposing another dilapidated school that outlived its usage and repurposing it, if we're going to abate a 1954 structure that has not been looked at with the facility study, and I tour both, in my opinion, I think Frehney is in better shape than Driver. Why not put it there? They're both hot-ticket areas far as growth. My concern is, I think, I think we really need to have more discussion on ulterior, on alternative ways to utilize our properties than turn down a Staples School and turn it into a green space when there's already a park there and we both know the original design for it. If that's what we were talking about doing, putting the original design that was supposed to be there, there. I could support an indoor Olympic-sized swimming pool going on Frehney Avenue because that was a part of the original Recreation Center design. The East Suffolk Rec Center is the original Boys and Girls Club design, that what we have with the addition of the gymnasium. But what the citizens got for it was, and I get it, the city manager at that time, she salvaged the project because some things fell through and made a Recreation Center happen. I'm strongly of the opinion that we need to slow down and have meaningful discussion on ways we can utilize property. I just heard us both talk about how the Northern End is growing and tapped out and where are we going to send the future growth? Here we are, turning over a school that could be, possibly go back to what Driver did for the original Florence Bowser. It relieved, well, Florence Bowser relieved the lower grades. And this one, you could actually do the inverse of it and let the drivers relieve the lower grades and take that capacity out of Florence Bowser Elementary School. I understand that the residents in the Northern End like to play baseball. However, all of our elementary schools are built with baseball fields that's not being utilized. We just did a sports plex or something of the sort off of, what's the road? Sleepy Hole? You have monogram. I view that our school property should do what it's intended to do, educate students as its primary focal point. My major and initial reaction and concern is not youth sports. And you're talking about a sports fanatic here. So it's not that I don't want to see youth play sports, but I don't feel that that should be our driving force behind our discussion. I'm concerned, and I will share my other concerns at a later- I'm concerned, and I will share my other concerns at a later reason, because this began to bother me on the history above. I'm, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop there and I'm gonna share those concerns at a later meeting. But, I would like for us to have fruitful, meaningful discussion as into what is best for us. Because we're talking about pinching pennies and being wise with our funds. We already own the land, we're gonna abate the building. Is it possible that we could repurpose that building to take some administrative office space off our hands versus turn it down? We don't know, we haven't had that discussion, so.
Anyone else from the school board?
Okay, we're gonna move to closing remarks. Uh, well, remember, Riddick, we'd like to start over there since you're already warmed up.
Yeah, I'll start, I believe I keep mine short and sweet. First and foremost, I wanna say thank you, um, Mayor Dooman, Chairwoman Jenkins, uh, City Council members, Dr. Gordon, City Manager Moore. This is what we need, tough discussion coming out of our little squares to see how we can work collaboratively to improve the quality of life for our citizens. I also wanna say thank you to Mayor Dooman and City Council and the City Manager also for your support in our, in fully funding our budget, uh, our operating budget, definitely wanna say thank you for that. Uh, I believe and I know that the pathway forward is full of challenges. How do we eat this elephant, is the question. I do believe we have the right people at the table to get it done. But, it's gonna take more meaningful conversations, look, being willing to look at it from another person's point of view, being willing to go against what our personal norms are to see how we can improve the quality of life for everyone. I believe that we can make the city of Suffolk a premier city that houses a premier school division. Listening to us exchange our conversation and dialogue today is remarkable. Now, I just want to see us go forward and come up with a realistic plan to replace our age school infrastructure. And I think we need to bring everyone to the table, even our state representatives, to the table on how we can work collaboratively together to eat this elephant. This is not just a city council and a school board problem, but this is also our state representative's problem and our federal representative's problems. Everybody can come together and support one another. Uh, thank you for the tough questions from both ends. Thank you, uh, for the city staff and your responses. Thank you, Dr. Gordon, for your responses as well, and that's all.
Thank you, Dr. Buck.
I think that most of the people sitting here, I think Shelley, you're probably the newest person, Councilwoman Valo, and you, Mr. Williams, but we've worked in other, other venues. Uh, the newest people here, I think, Mike, you and I have been together, you and Mayor, uh, Mr. Bennett and Mr. Fawcett and I have been together for the last twelve years, uh, working on this thing. And I think we've had some very productive, uh, things to be done, whether we agreed on how to get there or not. It didn't matter as long as we got there, the goal was to get there. And if we got there, we got there, whatever way we got there. So, I can say that it has been a learning experience and despite whatever we had to get there, to do to get there, we got there. Uh, our schools are in excellent condition and whether people agree as far as academics, as far as our job to educate students, we're doing an excellent job. We can always, there's always room for improvement with anything and that's what we've done. We've got leaders in our school who've taught our children, actually, our children, our staff and, uh, people in our community have written a book. I don't know if you know that, I wrote an article in Mr. Ward's paper describing some of our accomplishments. And if you haven't read it, I want you to read it because they describe what we've been able to accomplish in the schools just this year. There are many things that we need to do and I think if we speak positively about those things, if people understand there's a good school system, our city will continue to grow in a positive direction and not in a negative one. I expressed earlier that I want our, our schools to grow just like our city is growing. And if we can ever get on that path, we'll work it out. Uh, I pray that God will bless all of you as you try to do the right thing and that everybody's heart will be in the right place as they try to do the right thing. Faking it will not work because it will show after a while where you really are. And if you really are sincere about wanting to do the right thing, it will show. Uh, again, God bless you all as you try to do what we're supposed to be here for. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ward?
Yeah, first of all, I think the mayor, school board chair, Ms. Jenkins, Superintendent Gordon, City Manager Al Moore, and the school board and the city council. Well, uh, earlier today, I heard that Pewlsville finally gonna get what they've been wanting, I hope, for a long time. City manager said that to me, had a couple of things that delayed it, but like I just, you heard, sixty to ninety days, uh, we should be moving dirt, hopefully. Uh, I'm not gonna say much myself neither, I'm gonna hold mine for a later time. Uh, this is, is a happy day and a sad day for me right now. Uh, one thing I wanted to say this is growth, twenty thousand more people probably have moved in Suffolk the last so many years. And we need to get the work done. I've been on the council twelve years, look like it might be four more years. But, you gotta remember, when we elected, a lot of these things wasn't inherited. A lot of these things been going on for years. Schools old, fifty-five years or more, uh, whatever, whatever age they are, we've been trying to do this. And I just wanted to say this too because everyone at this table cares about the kids, the children. And we just have different way of saying things or getting things done, but it's, it's not, it's taken to the heart because the most important thing is about the kids. That's how, y'all could talk all about how y'all feel about this and the little attitudes you might carry. But, I think everybody trying to do the best they can do, what we, what we inherited, and I really believe that. Like I said, I'm gonna talk a little much later during the new year, but right now, uh, Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll discuss that with you. I wanna focus on Dr. Buck. This is Dr. Buck's last meeting. Dr. Buck, me and you go back to CCI enforcement, that's a long time ago. Dr. Buck, to me, he was my anchor, you helped me up, I told you when I first got elected, I said, "Dr. Buck, you the expert." What you say, that's what I'm gonna go on. I have a problem, I'm gonna talk to you, Dr. Buck. And I always had faith in you and I think you was true to me. When he had all these complaints about me, you stood up. You said, "Me and Doc, me and Vice Mayor were friends." And you have shown that to me in the last one or two years, really have shown that to me. I wanna let you know, you have been very important on this school board because you love them kids. And there's one thing about I know, you, you, they might not agree with you, but you want the best for the kids. And I'm with you all the way and you know that. Sad to see you go, but you will be missed here. Say yourself, but you know I'm gonna miss you, but you told me I could keep calling, okay? And, and I appreciate what you and Dr. Gordon did for me, I really do appreciate that, Dr. Gordon. Thank you so much that you did that and we've been going on for a year, but you handled it with grace and you handled it professionally, thank you so much, I really appreciate it. Cause I don't know if I would've handled it a little different after what was going on. But, you and Dr. Buck took care of that for me. And if, uh, also wanna share something that Councilwoman Williams wanna share, Ms. Barham. She's, she's the one retired, so I'll let him say something about that. But, I wanna make sure that, uh, I recognize her, just like I recognize you. It's all right if you, Mayor, uh, City Manager, I'd like to ask my grandson to come up. And he have a little something for Dr. Buck, she helped him. Please, excuse me for a minute. Thank you. I ain't finished yet, so. Yeah, I have a, I have a couple of partners in crime, the mayor, Mr. Williams, Dr. Buck, he's still. That's how me and Mr. Williams do. This also.
Thank you, Buck.
It's your call.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate you.
Can I just say one thing about Ms. Barham?
She was, she been on there for a long time also. And I, and I wanna just say this, she was like the gatekeeper. She made things, made sure things are all right and she had the wisdom, about to say is Suffolk School and she loved the community so in the school. So, Mr. Williams, take it on.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, you, you've actually said it all. Dr. Buck, Ms. Barham who's not here, um, you know, you guys have done so much for our city. So much for our kids, so much for the parents who entrusted you in the school system with raising the kids and, and teaching them. Um, just, it's sad, but understandable that, uh, you guys have decided to retire. But, please know that you're truly gonna be missed. Um, I'm sorry, Ms. Barham is not here, it's my understanding that, um, her husband is ill and she couldn't make it. Um, I was so, uh, much hoping to be able to share this with her and present her with the, uh, what, uh, the Vice Mayor and I had came up with for presenting the two of you with. Um, just know that we love you, we wish you much success in your new life adventure. Uh, enjoy retirement, cause I don't think you're gonna retire. I mean, you're gonna be on the other side of that mic, like you said. And you, uh, you don't have to choose your words once you're on that side of them. So, we'll, 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 we'll be looking, um, to see how you continue to be that voice of those students and the people of our community. Thank you, now, thank you for your years of service. Um, I would like to touch on a few other things, um, to Mayor Dooman, Chairwoman Jenkins, City Manager Moore, Superintendent Dr. Gordon, city staff for, um, city council, school board members, um, city staff for putting together a very informative or informed, um, report. Um, you were able to cover a lot of things and it's appreciative. Not only that, um, I appreciate, um, listening to all the questions and concerns of everyone here. Um, it's important that the public know that we love our city, number one. We love our kids, we are vested in this community. And it just means, I love Suffolk, I love Suffolk. I've had, you know, opportunity to move, but I chose to stay here. And I've raised my kids and my grandkids are here. And I want them to be a part of this school system because in my opinion, the city of Suffolk is the best city in the Tidewater area. And our school system, to me, is the best and we have the best people representing us right now. So, I just appreciate everybody, your commitment, thank you, thank you all. Um, East Suffolk, um, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to, um, what happens in that area. However, you know, I kinda alluded to this the other day, I would like to see that school myself. And the reason I want to see it is because when I was in kindergarten, I went to East Suffolk. And I remember being so hot, cause we went in the summer, I don't know how I wound up going in the summer. But, I remember being so hot in that school, we had to raise the windows and seemed like it still wasn't enough air coming through there. But, I, I remember that more than anything else and I just wanna walk back through it. I just wanna see it, you know, before anything is done to it. So, uh, if that can be arranged, I would greatly appreciate that. Um, and with that, thank you all again. Councilmember Brother, Brother?
Dang, I have to follow all that. Um, this is always an interesting meeting, I think this is my third one. Um, I think, just to echo what everyone has said so far, we're all here because we want our city to be great and we want our school system to be the best anywhere. And we want our students to be served well and get a great education and, and we're all here to do that work. Everybody on city council, everybody, um, on the school board, all the staff, superintendent, city manager. I mean, that, we all have the same goal, that's already been said. Um, we may have different ideas of how to get there. Um, if we had a pot of gold and we could fund everything the way we want to, we would speed a lot of this stuff up. But, we have to work, um, as best we can with the resources that we have available. Look for other resources from the state and federal government. Every locality in the country is doing the same thing, um, and we have finite resources. So, um, I, I wish we could get, you know, I wish we could get all the money to do everything that we want because we do all have the same goals. Um, I would love to see that these two bodies be more collaborative. I don't think we, you know, we have a couple of hours once a year. I know we can talk independently, but we're all busy people. Um, we all have a lot of other commitments, but it, it serves us well when we talk to each other and when we understand, you know, the challenges that the school is facing and the challenges that the city, if we can, you know, we can all communicate about it, maybe we can find solutions. So, I would love to see us be more collaborative. I would also love to see, um, I, the, part of my overview of the discussion today is I don't, I don't feel like we have the best numbers to work with, cause we're hearing different numbers on school capacity, we're hearing different numbers on, you know, the number of students, on student generation. And it feels, it all feels a little squishy and I, I'm not a great numbers person, but I would love to see more accurate accounting of what we actually are dealing with. Um, you know, which schools have too many kids, which schools don't have as many kids, you know? What, what are the solutions that we come up with? So, um, just some more concrete facts and figures for us to work with. Um, and I know it's a hard number to pin down, I know it changes every year and I know the, the military families coming in and out, it's hard to, it's hard to estimate. And we can't predict the future, none of us can, we predicted growth as best we can and it's not always where we think it's gonna be. But, um, I, I for one, so, two takeaways, I would love to have, um, more accurate numbers and I would love to have better collaboration between our two bodies. Because again, we're all, you know, the future of our city is the children that are being raised here. And it's gonna do all of us, um, a great services if they have the, the best education, the best upbringing that they can possibly have, so. Um, with that, thanks to everybody, I, you know, I have my back to, you know, I don't know who's back there, but, um, I just appreciate, um, everybody who, um, made today's meeting possible to all the staff that, you know, presented and, um, just to- presented, and just to, all the hard work and all the time and energy that everybody sitting here puts into this. We, you know, we're elected to be here to make these decisions, and it's, I know we all take it seriously, I know we all want the best thing for the city. So, just thanks to everybody for your time and your energy, and I look forward to good things in the future.
What member slung up?
So, I just want to pick up where council, councilmember Butler-Barlow left off in thanking everybody for all of the efforts that went into arranging today, from the setup to the meeting, to all the preparation, all the presentations, and, and again, to the dialogue. I think that as Ms. Butler-Barlow stated, she was saying collaboration, I wrote down communication, I think that is paramount for us as a body to work together, because we are, we are a team. And it doesn't always feel like that, but this is a team for the city of Suffolk, for the kids of Suffolk, for our whole community at large. And I think it's incredibly important that we have that communication. And I would go a little bit further to say, communication that is proactive instead of reactive is always the best. So, the more we can talk on the forefront, ahead of time, in the beginnings, in the brainstorming stage, and the more that information can be disseminated back and forth between the two bodies, I think the more functional we will be, the more united we will be, the more collaborative we will be, and the more effective ultimately we will be for the city. So, I, I appreciate the discussion today. I think that we hit on that in several points. I'd like to thank Mr. Hutchings for taking the time to answer my question, because a lot of times, you know, I mean, it's difficult in this setting when you have board members and councilmen rolling on and off every two years. You know, it's, it's hard to bring everybody up to speed and understanding and perception, so it's important to be able to ask those questions and to, to receive those answers. And again, I think that that information is helpful for all of us working together. So, thank you for, for the time to speak tonight.
Dr. Brean.
Thank you. I, I too would like to echo those sentiments. Grateful that we were able to get together and review the CIP and talk about the pipeline development. As I look at the pipeline development, I see the hot zones that are there, and it's not brand new. It's something that has been talked about since I've been on the board and, and probably a decade before I was here. My question is, you know, how are we planning for the, the current situation we're in and, and the future growth that's coming? Because it's coming, it's here, and it's still coming. The word that I wrote down was collaborate. How can we collaborate to think outside the box between these two bodies? We are both elected to oversee different parts and things that are happening in the city, and, and collaborating together will help us to meet the needs. Because of being on the school board side has to do with the students and the educators, because when we don't collaborate well, they're the ones that suffer ultimately. Particularly with the overcapacity issues and, and our building needs, looking at this pipeline and thinking, you know, how are we gonna, how are we gonna accomplish this? Is this gonna be a matter of rezoning? Because we're gonna have to do something as we're waiting for the, the building projects and the renovations to happen, you know? How can we, as a body of elected officials, think through this process and do what's in the very best interest of the students and the educators? Development is all over Suffolk, and the map showed it to us clearly today. We need to be considering smart growth. We need to have strategic plans in place. And in those plans, we need to have things that are data-driven, because we've got decisions and planning that are coming down, and we've got to be ready and prepared. And we can't make decisions if we don't have good data and we're not being driven by that data. And so, I echo what Councilmember Butler said. I'd, I'd like to see the numbers. Can you, can you bring the data for us to look at so that we can make good decisions together as a group? On our end, for the school board, what grants, state and federal, can we apply for? Have we exhausted our ability there? Do we need to have somebody on board that is doing nothing but grant writing for us? I mean, I, I think about this on, on the, on the school end, and I wonder, what about on the, on the city end? Do we need to have full-time people that are dedicated in both of these areas that are looking for nothing but money? Because the, I think we can all agree, we need money. And it's not growing on trees. And you can only take so much blood out of a turnip, you know, you can only tax people in the city so much. You know, we have to start thinking outside of the box when it comes to generating money. We have the right people at the table. We have the right people that want to do what is necessary, not only on the city end, but for our school division. And I think that if we can find a way to collabor, collaborate effectively and, and think, how are we gonna solve these problems? Not, not what we've been doing, because I, like Board Member Vice Chair Howell said, you know, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. We need to do something that is gonna be effective, and I think that we can do that working together. And I look forward to that possibility in the future, as we are working towards, you know, figuring out how we're gonna fix some of these capacity and building issues that we have going on in our city. Thank you.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Thank you Mayor. Just a couple of things. First off, I want to thank everybody that's here at the table today. I mean, a lot of great conversation, a lot of good information. I respect everybody's information that they asked for and, and what you're, what we're looking at. I appreciate this spreadsheet. It's, it's a pretty heavy lift, but I'm sure there's some ways to get to some of this, sure. I'd like to echo, you know, most everybody said the same things at this table, collaboration and so on and so forth. But I'd like to just make a comment about what Ms. Howell had said about the Driver Elementary School. And that school's been sitting vacant for a number of years. That school is beyond any repair that you could do to it, to make it habitable again, to put people in it effectively without costing a lot, lot more money than you think. I think if you had an engineering group go in there and look at that school, they would probably give you something that, and figure-wise, that would not fit well with even what's on this spreadsheet, realistically. You have to really go there and take a look. I mean, the people over there in that neighborhoods deserve that school to be gone. That school should have been gone a long time ago. It's been broken, too tore up. It's infested with everything and anything. I hear very much so from the neighbors that are right next to that building, there's probably a couple of houses right next to it, not counting the beautiful neighborhood that surrounds it, that put up with it. I've heard from the HOA presidents over there, and I'm sure Heather has. We've heard from the Driver community, the association over there, the community itself, the business association. They are tired. They are tired. And they want that, something done effectively to that area. It's not effective to go on and put your main building over there. You talked about not having places to go eat and be able to go out for thirty minutes to go somewhere. You go to Driver and put them there, even if you could put them there, it would take you longer to get out and go down to find something to eat than it would be for the time that you would have for that employee. So, that's off, that's right out the window, right there. Because it's really not a whole lot in Driver itself. So, you know, I've heard all the things about repurposing. If I thought for a minute that that building could be repurposed realistically, and I've been in business a while myself, can kind of figure things out. If I thought for a minute that building could be repurposed, I'd be the first one to jump on it until you do it, if there was an added plus for it. Little League Field behind there has been there for a decade, over a decade or better. That Little League Field's been there a long time, has a long history. Goes back, dated probably around the time of that school, to be honest with you. So, you know, if we really want to make some headway here, we need to find something we're gonna repurpose. And you made a good point about the VDOT building. You made a good point about that. I think that may be something that could be looked at, that would, if you want to repurpose something, there's where you want to stick your money at, not in the Driver Elementary. But stick your money where it's gonna hurt, put, put the best on you and not hurt you by putting it over there. So, I think everybody's got some good ideas. And I'm, I'm all for doing anything we can do to improve the, improve the issues. I would be first to tell you, I think Elephant Fork, Elephant Fork needs to go, right out the gate. I'll tell you that, right out the gate. I agree that, that, that school's in a bad spot, and it's in pretty bad shape. We look, we just, we did some heavy lifting just to get JFK off the ground. I mean, a lot of lifting. I mean, if we hadn't got some grant out of that and a few other things, boost some money around, we'd still be floundering a little bit. Because it was a heavy lift when you go from the forty-eighths to the seventy-five million. That's a big lift. So, it goes to tell you what you're gonna be looking forward to, and you try to build another elementary school, you're probably gonna be looking at the sixty million, right out of the gate. That's to get a, I, I mean, that's to probably get a thousand-foot school, a thousand-seat school all around. So, things are not getting cheaper, that's for sure. Things are getting much, much more expensive, and money is going to be tougher to get. You have to work hard. And I have to agree with Dawn here, the budget, you know, you cannot tax the people enough in this city to be able to build the amount of stuff you need to build. The bond rating won't take with so much pressure. We bounce up too far against that bond rating, your AAA is going out the window. When that AAA goes out the window, that means you're gonna borrow money at a much higher rate, you're gonna get less. You're not gonna be able to get the things you want. So, there's, there's a whole lot of moving parts here that we have to consider. What is the hottest priority? That's the point. The hottest priority to me is educate students. That's my priority. Now, I, I know the mayor and everybody's talked about that building you're in, and it's, it's another building that's really in bad shape. Can we afford to build something and put you in something at the same time? Now, that's, that's something we gotta look at, if that's realistic. I mean, if we could get VDOT building and build a school, we'd be in good shape, wouldn't we? We'd be in good shape, but can we do it? I don't know that we could do it based on what the cost would be, what we have, the money available to do it. But I'm all open for anything. If somebody can bring the miracle to the table here, I'm all in, you know? Because everything is going to revolve, whether we like it or not, is gonna revolve around that dollar bill. So, you know, I, I would just say that we gotta keep our heads working, keep coming up with a way, that we can come with some solutions that are realistically can work and be put in, where we have affordable room. And, and we take a bite of the apple and go at it. That's, we built two schools out in the North River End. We built Florence Bowser and Fred Cherry. We didn't pay as much for those two schools, we paid for this one JFK. We didn't. Think about it. That's only been a few years back. So, and they're beautiful schools. Those two schools are top-notch. But anyway, I, I'm gonna end with it, but one other thing I'd like to thank Dr. Buck, Buck Bucks, for everything you've done in support of your school board system, as part of, as well as the city. Thank you for your dedication and your input to everything you've ever wanted to do and have done. I hope the best for you and your family as you move forward in the next phase of whatever you decide to do. But I think it was a good tribute today, based on you, you here. Yes ma'am, and I wish you well, and have fun, a little bit. Have a little fun. With that Mayor, I'm gonna say I'm done. I'd like to be excused, I have to pick someone up here very shortly. I want him standing outside, if I can help him. Thank you. Thank you all.
Councilmember Bennet.
Thank you. Thank you. First, I'd just like to start by thanking the school board and council for coming together, manager, Dr. Gordon, and the mayor and chair of the school board for setting a meeting up and having an agenda that we were going by, and that, there's a lot of discussion on a lot of topics that affect all of us. And I really do appreciate all the conversations that was had all around the table. There were a lot of things that were said that sort of caught my ear, with some of the numbers and things that was taking place. I think that, looking at the numbers that we are given, and looking at the number of students, I, I was really surprised when Dr. Gordon said that Florence Bowser's already had nine hundred and sixteen students. I mean, that was something that I think when that school was built, it was probably over about three hundred kids, I think, less than capacity, I believe it was. I'm thinking about close somewhere in that neighborhood. In that short period of time, the population has grown that much. So, I think we need to really focus on our growth area, where our schools are, and the impact that it will have on the transportation, trying to get the kids to school. If you go by each school now, you'll see a lot of parents that are driving the kids to school. Every one I pass by, there's a line of cars, morning and afternoon, parents picking up and dropping off kids. So, that tell you that transportation is an issue with drivers, I'm sure with you all, trying to keep drivers and trying to supply enough support there to take those kids back and forth to school. So, I commend all of you on the school board and staff for all that you do each and every day, to try to educate our kids and give them the best education that is offered in the state of Virginia to them. And I think I'm, I'm very proud of the number of graduates that you have each year and the number of scholarships that are given to some public schools each year for the kids. That means that a lot of effort is being put into the students and to, with the parents, and getting involved with the school system. And Dr. Buck, it's been nice having our conversation with you. We will still have our conversation. This doesn't stop just because you're leaving off the school board. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I love you standing up for what you believe in. And that's what a person's supposed to do, stand up for what you believe in and speak what you feel that you stand for. So, I don't have any problem at all for you standing up when you feel like you need to let your voice be heard. And Ms. Barron, she and I, I knew Ms. Barron way before I knew you, but anyway, it's, oh, you all have really done a great job with the school system, trying to make sure that you gave the students and staff everything that they needed to try to improve the quality of education in the city of Suffolk. We cannot thank you all enough for all that you've done. Also, I would like to say that the John F. Kennedy School was not something that wasn't needed. That was way overdue.
Amen.
So, therefore, I can truthfully say, I'm happy that council and school board were able and staff were able to get together to fund that school. But I have a big concern with Elephant Fork. That school is just as bad, if not worse, than John F. Kennedy's schoolwork. So, therefore, I am a strong advocate of whatever I can do, or whatever it will take me to try and do, I will support moving that school up way back ahead of where it's scheduled. Instead of spending money for some more portable buildings, I think it should be put into buildings, I think it should be put into changing that school and building those schools. So I am strongly supportive of that. I think that school needs to be moved up, and we need to work together as council and school board to come up with a way that we can start funding that school rather than have it out and, I don't even see it on the calendar, on the schedule. Just some money for $3 million for portable buildings.
Design.
Oh, that's just for design. So we need to go a little bit further than design on that. So I think we need to really put some more effort into Elephant Fork School. There were a lot of talk about the school board office, and I have said, as I said earlier, I feel strongly that that should have been, we should have addressed, but I know what had happened. Somebody might remember this, is that we was talking about keeping it downtown because foot traffic wanted to try to build up downtown to keep more people with the foot traffic downtown. So that's the reason why money was being spent to rent the building that they're in. But I didn't ever believe in that, didn't agree with it, but I was just one person. But I think it's time now for us to, as Mr. Riddick, I think, said, we probably paid for that building, a new building, twice of rent that we have paid into that building. So I think it's time for us to move ahead and get out of that building and do whatever we could do to move out of that. And I hope that we can continue to meet together as a group, to hear each other's concerns, and actually, it will get more working relationship, I think, with everyone being able to sit around the table and talk among ourselves, rather than each other going out with a different story and a different reason that I'm saying this. Everybody will be hearing the same thing at the same time. So I think it's good that we can all meet together, and I think we need to do it. I said this before, before it's time, budget time. I think we need to work together so we prepare the budget. Everybody will be on board and know exactly what to expect, what we can afford, what we can't afford, and come to an agreement that this is the direction that we need to go in to work together, not working against each other. I'm going to be angry because I can't get what I want. I'm going to be angry because you don't give me what I want. So we all need to work together to try to meet the need for the children that we serve here in this city. And with that, again, I thank all of you for coming, and I think we should continue our conversation as soon as possible. Thank you.
Vice Chair Howell.
Thank you. I first want to acknowledge, I welcome discussion with Mr. Riddick about Driver. I know how he feels. He knows how I feel. As I'm duty-bound to represent my borough, I stand firm in that there's no way to get Driver on the CIP as it stands, and I'm not comfortable with making it, you know, a fairyland number 11 on our CIP and making people wait more than a decade to repurpose it. There is not a school, the schools that are on our CIP currently have children in them, and they take priority over that. And so, I welcome conversation, other suggestions, but the bottom line is there's nowhere that Driver fits in the CIP to be repurposed anytime soon. And as the representative of my borough, I'm going to stand up for them. I would like to acknowledge that the Florence Bowser traffic has already improved. I got a lot of phone calls the first week of school, as I expected, and I reminded them it was the first week of school, but I also did reach out to Councilman Fawcett and the mayor, recognizing that the roadways that the traffic was building up on is the responsibility of city council and not the school system. And so, I sort of passed the buck, if you will, and they both very quickly, from what I understand, brought Mr. Moore into the conversation. And within just a couple of days, there was dialogue, there were solutions being discussed, and it's already better. So I am thankful for that. I like Mr. Riddick's idea to consider, if there's land available out there that Elephant's Fork can be considered for, that respectfully, if city council would just consider that as a purchase and an asset, and a proactive step in the direction of healing something that is broken in Elephant's Fork. And then, my final couple of comments, my goal in my comments earlier this evening is just that you all understand the position that we're in, when we're on the receiving end of the after-effects of the development in the city. I'm not anti-growth. I'm for informed growth, and I would just ask you to consider us as you're having these meetings and you're approving development, sale of land, whatever it is, as you're considering the needs that are going to be factored in for infrastructure, let us also be in the back of your mind, how is this going to impact the schools that will be affected by this growth? And just keep us in your sights as you're planning for the future of Suffolk. Maybe consider earmarking funds from land you sell to the schools for the capital improvement plan specifically, not our operating budget, but for capital improvements. I'm sure there's a variety of things that can be done. I'm sure I am completely unaware of most of them. So I humbly welcome any correction or information you can give me. I just see a disconnect in the way that things are happening in our schools right now and the power we have over it ourselves to fix it. And I would just like to be part of that discussion when it's possible. Y'all have a good evening.
Chairman Jenkins.
Thank you. As everyone has said, thank you so much, city council and our school board members for coming together to meet. I know our past meetings have been very informative. We've gotten a lot of feedback from them. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to meet, to share, and you all listen to our concerns. And again, like we say on school board, it's not that we're going to always agree on everything, but just the dialogue and letting you all know what we're thinking, how we feel, and how you can educate us on things that we really don't know the background about. And so not only does our kids need to be educated, we all need to be educated, because there's a lot of things on our school board side you all may not understand as city council and then vice versa. And that's why it's so important that we come together to have fruitful discussion and, you know, set a plan. I agree, we do need to, meeting more would be beneficial for us if we have meetings like this, so we can put things in place. We can't leave here and all of a sudden a bunch of money appears, but we can make plans and see what needs to be done first. I agree with my councilman with Elephant's Fork. I've been there so many times, and Dr. Buck and everyone, we agree about the things that needs to be done with Elephant's Fork. So putting that as close up as possible, let's see what we can do for our admin staff needing a place. We know that's important, too. But just like our Vice Chair Howell said and everyone, our students are first. Our students, that's the reason why we're here on the school board. We're here for the students. And I just appreciate, again, what everybody said, and let's go out and come up with a plan. We know what we have on our CIP, but things happen that we are not in control of, like within our city. Some things may happen that, you know, that will come up, that will change things on the CIP that we need to do better, like the water drainage. That's great, because I've heard about that, too. It's not really a school board issue, but we've heard about it. So now we know that something's going to happen within 90 days. That's great, that our citizens see progress. But to come to a meeting every, whatever time we come and nothing changes, that's when they get frustrated. But we are two bodies that see the need, and we want the change, and we just have to work together to see the best way to do it. Dr. Buck, I know we will be doing something later on, but just in front of everyone, Dr. Buck and Mrs. Byrne, no one can replace the wisdom and the knowledge and what you all have done for our school board and for our city. Just like I said, it's like you would want to just put a hole in your head and just kind of get some of that out, so we can learn and know what you know, because your knowledge is so powerful in what you've done. You have put our kids first. You have put our city first, even our staff. When you say something, it's for the better, and you've always done it. So thank you so, so much for what you've done. And I just want to say I look forward to our next meeting. If we all can meet sooner, let's do that, because it's only going to make things better for our city and for our school. Thank you, Dr. Gordon, for all that you do and the staff. Thank you so much. And again, we will not be here till 5:00 a.m. I think we're about to go.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I want to start off with thanking the manager and the staff for your presentation. There was a lot of very pertinent information presented and some very relative discussion to follow. There's no question that everyone gathered here today has the same goal, which is to advance our city and our school system, to provide two things, the best quality of life for our citizens, along with the best education for our students. Dr. Brooks, Buck, we have served together for 12 years, two years together on our now joint committee for collaborative fiscal concerns, and I appreciate you putting that title together. I had to practice that a while before I could get it straight, but we had some very robust discussions for those last two years. And as you mentioned, we haven't always agreed, but we have always been willing to listen to each other. I don't remember anybody hanging up on anybody ever. You know, we always talk. So I want to thank you for your service and just wish you all the best in the future for whatever you decide to do. And I'm here if you need me. You can still pick up the phone and call. I'm sure you hadn't lost the number. And if there is no other further business this evening, here in Done, this meeting is adjourned.